Ben, can you hear it just now? Hello, Ben? Got it, alright.
Okay.
Alright, looks like we're getting a echo for a second. Okay. Alright, it's uh 2:03 October 18th. I will open this Grand County Commission Workshop on Special Events. In attendance, we have Commissioners Sarah Stock, Kevin Walker, Josie Kovach, Tricia Dean, Mary McGann, and myself, Jacques Hadler. We also have Clerk Kate Waitteck, Commission Administrator Mallory Nassau, and Associate Administrator Quinn Hall. And from Special Events, we have Angie Book, Director of OSTA, and Rachel Bartlett with the Economic Development Department and Special Events Coordinator. I will turn this over to Angie and Rachel at this time.
Okay, I'm... So would you guys like us to start with just going event by event? And we answer questions?
Maybe.
Okay.
Maybe explain that. Do we need...
Should we go through?
The criteria, how to...
Yeah, I think we'll... You'd like to start with the ordinance?
Probably, just, I think, just for the public, it'd probably be worth going over. Criteria and, um, I get, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We're really, we haven't passed the ordinance yet, so...
Okay. I think you might want to chime in a little bit on this because I'm not as familiar with the ordinance it's going to be, which is you are. So what we're going to do is go over the criteria for these events being here. These are the high-impact events that meet county commission requirement for needing approval. So these are the events that are over a certain number. Do you want to?
I would say what they are is we had the little Special Event Advisory Committee meet.
Yep.
And so I think this catches some that are kind of in a gray area of like, well, like, we think this could be high-impact based on, but it's not a... We're not at a point, and I don't think we're going to set it up that it's ever, you know, black and white. We want to keep it kind of holistic, but this is within the ordinance in terms of the size and yada yada. But there are other things that we captured that we thought until that is ironed out with the ordinance, we just thought it would be best to bring in all of you.
Right, so yeah, let you guys decide and get your feedback on them. So the way we have it set up is it will be the event, the date of the event, the total daily attendance. So the total daily attendance is everything in whole. That's participants, that's staff, that's registration, volunteers, that's the whole total. And then some staff notes. We thought we would just touch on the important notes.
And Angie, on the attendance, I know in the past, there's been some confusion about whether attendance is number of vehicles and number of people. And for the events listed here, is all of the number of people?
It's all of it.
Okay, so if I see a motorized event with forty people, I can guess that might actually be twenty or thirty vehicles or something.
Right. And I'll try to explain that as I go through. Those of these meetings know that answer. I'll try to give that as I go through. And so the first one, and we numbered them. So as I go through, I'll give the number and then the event name. So the first one is the Arches Ultra Marathon. The type is athletic, it's competition, it's a running event. The date is January 28th. Total daily attendance is 1,385. Staff notes is this is a running event, using brands, Klonzo's, Klondike Glove. It has five years of history and good standing. And the ITA was also approved by SEC before all the process changes. Any questions on that of it?
Um, where, do you know where it's staged from?
They start at the brands, and then they run through some of the trails in Klonzo, Klondike Glove, and then come back through.
I like it that it's in January.
Yeah, and this is one of the Mad Moose events.
The Mad Moose, right, which is, which is local, that's the Ricks, right?
Yeah, it's Denise.
Yeah, Denise and Justin, yeah.
Okay, the next one, we're going into February. This is Moab's Red Hot. It's also an athletic competition event, the date's February 18th. Total daily attendance is 1,100. Also a running event. The event is using Lower Gemini Bridges area, sixteen years of history and good standing. It also was, um, the ITA was approved through SEC.
Is this a Mad Moose event also?
I'll just keep going, you guys let me know if you have questions.
Oh, okay, I think that's great, thank you.
Um, really quickly, I'm sorry, this is already done, want to say for people listening what SEC is?
Oh, SEC is the Special Event Advisory Committee. Um, March 10th applies. Number three is Live at Red Cliffs. This is actually a group of eight concerts spanning over the season. They don't have their exact dates yet, but they wanted to get their intent to apply in because they'll be starting in the spring. And so it's March through June, and they're looking at eight dates, and they're looking at 750 per event. There are music events held at Red Cliffs Lodge using a permanent stage, and the schedule's not finalized yet.
And so this...
Go ahead, Mary.
So this would be an event that, for locals to go to the concert?
Um, are they on the weekends, or is there...
We don't, they don't have those dates.
I think one of them that we said, I want to say was April 30th, but they're working with the artist's schedule, so they're kind of catching people as they're going from Denver to Salt Lake and stuff like that. So some of them would probably be on a weekday, some of them will probably be weekends. But there's no way to know at this point.
And this will be the first year for these concerts?
They actually have done two, three for this, this fall. I think two of them are already happened, and there's one coming up next month.
Were they as large?
I don't think they were as large. All the numbers are, say, maximum anticipated attendance, so these are very optimistic projections for all of these events.
Okay.
Yeah, we told them to go with the higher number rather than, rather be safe, I'm sorry, on a low number.
I mean, I, I like the sound of music. My concern here is just the level of traffic on the River Road, and if it's on peak weekends, what's happening then? I mean, the filming is having a huge impact on traffic on the River Road also, and that's, it's just a very high-use area, but I'm not sure. We're gonna take that. It's hard to know if it's, if we don't know when the dates are, or...
Yeah, when I spoke to Stephen, Stephen Walker from Red Cliffs, he's doing organizing, he is anticipating a certain percentage of that being the people who are staying at the lodge as well. He didn't give me an exact number because, again, this is a new series. It takes a couple of years to kind of figure out exactly where people are coming from.
Yeah. Excuse me.
Any other questions on the Red Cliffs events? Okay, so number four is Moab Run the Rocks. It's also an athletic competition event. The dates are March 3rd through March 5th. Daily total attendance is 500. Running event, Gemini Bridges, Magnificent Seven, Brands, and Navajo Rocks. This is a new event. Their ITA was approved by SEC before the process change.
Is this also, is this local, is this the Ricks as well?
It's the Trans Rockies events that are based out of the Front Range.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
So this is...
So it's the same organizers as Moab Rocks?
Yes.
Okay.
Number five is the Skinny Tire Fest Athletic. This is a fundraiser event. Their fundraising goes to the American Lung Society. The dates are March 11th through the 14th. Total daily attendance is 645. The roads, the cycling event, using the Loop Road, Codash Road, 313 to Dead Horse Point, State Park, and Arches National Park. And then they also have 22 years of good standing history.
Um, real quick, going back to the Moab Run the Rocks, where does the staging for that take place?
It's three different days. So the first day, they're doing the Gemini Bridges Mag Seven, so they're staging at the Seven Mile Parking Lot. The second day is the Brands, so the Brands Parking Lot. And then the third day is Klondike Glove, so the Klondike Glove Parking Lot. Although I think they do also offer a shuttle, if I remember correctly. They do that for the bike event. I don't know if they're going to do that for the running event or not.
Number six is the Canyonlands Half Marathon. It's an athletic competitive running event. I'm using Highway 128, date's on March 18th. Total daily attendance is 1,700. This does require advanced life support station due to it being over 1,500 participants. It has forty-seven years of good standing and history. The ITA was also approved before processing through SEC. Number seven, Behind the Rocks Ultra is an athletic competitive event on March 25th. Total daily attendance is 450. Running event using Behind the Rocks, minimal trailer usage in Grand County. Nine years of history and good standing, and the ITA was also approved through SEC before any process changes. Moab Rocks, number eight, is also an athletic competitive event for the dates of March 25th through 27th. Daily, daily total attendance is 435. Mountain biking event using the Whole Enchilada, Klondike Gloves, and Magnificent Seven. Ten years of history and good standing, and the ITA was also approved through SEC before process changes. I'm, I'm gonna skip over number nine real quick and jump to number 10 because I'm gonna group number nine in with other items. Number 10 is Easter Jeep Safari. It's a motorized event and expo that takes place on trails down at OSTA. The dates are March 31st through April 9th. Daily total attendance is 750. They have over fifty-eight years of good standing history. Their BLM permits allows fifty vehicles per trail, but they keep it between 25 to 40. They like to stay below the track threshold, and that depends on what trail they're going to be on. And, let's see.
So, Angie, so on the sheet that we have, Jeep Safari's number nine.
Yeah.
It's number nine.
Yeah, I skipped number nine. I want to go back to number nine.
Well, but on my sheet, number nine is Jeep Safari?
She's looking at the agenda summary.
Oh, I'm going up the agenda summary.
Okay.
Oh, yep, it is number nine on here.
So, but, but I guess my other comment is we reached the end of a quarter. Maybe we should, just, I mean, the, the format we're trying to get into as we look at everything for a quarter and make a decision, so...
Do you want me to stop, and then we'll touch bases back on Jeep Safari?
Yeah, I want to try to figure out this first quarter and then resume.
So we'll stop at, do you want to stop at Moab Rocks? Or do you want to include Jeep Safari?
Jeep Safari, it seems like it's mostly in April, so I would include that as a spring event rather than...
Okay.
Yeah.
Lots of athletic events the first quarter, lots of running.
Yeah, so I guess my impression of this, yeah, there is heavy on running events. It's, it's not a really a packed calendar, I think, because of the time, the time of year. I mean, I do, I do think we have quite a lot of running, running events around here, and we shouldn't like automatically assume they're great, but these mostly seem to be staged in appropriate places. I'm, I'm not as familiar with some of the trails they're using. Um, but I was wondering if some, and this is kind of a warm-up for the next quarter, which is much bigger, but, you know, we could look at what would happen if we approved the events that have been going on for, say, more than twelve years or something like that, and then see how full the calendar looks and see whether we want to add anything additional beyond that. Just as a way to get to a decision more quickly, yeah.
Sure, Kevin. Yeah. So what you're proposing is check, add in the ones that have been around for, how long did you say? Ten years?
Over the spring, it seemed like twelve was a good cutoff. But, you know, I mean, I, I think, just work down. I think one of the criteria listed is, you know, like, you know, the half marathon, you know, that's a very disruptive event, but it's been going on for a long time.
Right.
And I, I'm, guess, I haven't heard anyone say that we shouldn't be, you know, giving them a permit anymore, so that's like one of the easy yeses on here, and so we should get those out of the way first and then see whether the calendar seems full or see whether we would do better to have even more events.
I don't see any event in the blue, that first quarter, that I would be uncomfortable with. They're pretty, you know, they've been around forever and...
Well, just, just playing devil's advocate, like, the, the concert series, they're talking about pretty high attendance, and they haven't, and it's mostly actually in the spring rather than the winter. And, you know, if those are a little, coincide with other high-attendance events, that might not be so great, so it seems a little, since, you know, crowding on the calendar is one of the things we're concerned about, pre approving an event that doesn't even have a state set yet, seems a little bit strange. On the other hand, I do agree that, you know, this kind of musical event adds variety, and otherwise it would be a good thing.
And I'm wondering, are they considering at all having, like they do for the music festival, having a shuttle?
It wasn't actually brought up, but it's something that I could mention to Stephen, and I know that you had mentioned putting conditions on the date so that you can say, you can do any of these dates but this date, this date, and this date. And I can take it to him and say, like, okay, this is the rules.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, on the, on the, on the concerts, they're basically working with the artists that, that might happen to be in the area. So the dates could be extremely nebulous, like, just depending on who's coming through.
It could be a Tuesday or Wednesday night.
Yeah, and, and how far in advance would they have the information as to when the concert would actually be? Like, a couple of months usually?
How long does it, do I see anybody from the Travel Council on here? Because that's how they work with our events that come, the summer concerts. At Swanee, as they work with people that are coming through.
Right.
Then we can afford it. They're not going to just come to us, but they're, they're always usually happy to drop in if they're on the road. So come, I, I guess I was wondering, anybody work on that? How long in advance do they usually know? That would be August, or who, who organizes that?
Yeah.
Who organizes that?
That's, it's the Travel Council.
The summer, the summer concert.
The summer free concerts at Swanee?
That's the city, right, yeah, Cassie, so first of all.
It's done in the city.
Oh, this, the Travel Council just pays for it, huh?
They pay for some of it, yeah.
Oh, okay, never mind, I, I, at first, we paid for it all, so now we pay some.
I mean, to me, it seems like the only ones you wouldn't want it to overlap with is the half marathon, right?
Or anything that's...
Skinny Tire, the Skinny Tire?
Skinny Tire does not go, well, they actually use the Loop Road. They do one day on the Loop Road, they, when they, they come back that way. And they, they do go, but do they do, don't they do it, do they do it clockwise then? And they hit the River Road first?
I honestly don't remember. To me, that's a smart way to do it, but they don't...
I, I, I did that one year, and they did it counterclockwise, but then I think that was an anomaly, but I can't recall.
But they do, you're right, they do, do it early. So it seems like the only one would be the half marathon.
And that would usually over before March.
You...
So, we're talking about the concerts?
The concerts, yeah.
So, so actually, I mean, it occurs to me, those are mainly in the next quarter, so maybe we should just lump them with the next quarter, yeah.
Sure.
And... So that, that...
Considering some of the events in this quarter, I think it is worth pointing out, like Canyonlands Half Marathon and anything that might be overlapping in March.
But I think there might be additional dates in the next quarter that maybe they should...
So make that like a condition?
Yeah. I don't know if that...
It's like a blackout date, kind of a thing. I don't know if we'd have to prevent it during the half marathon.
Seems like...
Because they, they're not, the events aren't going to coincide with each other. They're gonna be at total different times. And it might be a lovely thing for people who are visiting the town to buy a ticket and go to a concert.
Yeah.
But I, I thought one of our concerns was not to have a lot of high-attendance events landing on the same weekend. That seems like one of our main jobs. And 750 is a high number, and the half marathons are even higher numbers.
Although, I wouldn't, I would expect there'd be a lot of crossover. I would just add the numbers up and call it 2,500 people.
I do think 750 is very, very aspirational. I would be very interested to see what actually happens.
You know, the, the half marathon used to be a lottery that was closed off at 5,000.
Yeah.
That, that event's gone way down, so the reality is, like, I guess all of it's, you know, less than it used to be.
Yeah.
It used to be capped by...
Yeah, I remember, it comes right by my house at the end. It was absolutely huge.
But I think the shuttle question is a great question because that, in fact, is way smaller on the road if there's shuttles.
Well, also, do you know what time they're planning on staging the concerts? Like, would they, if it's a weekend with you in the afternoon, which might coincide with some of the runners, or was it more like in the evening?
Usually in the evening. I want to say it was around seven or so when they normally do them, maybe a little bit earlier.
But, and like Rachel was saying with the conditions for days, I haven't worked at the logistics and the site plan, but I don't see why you couldn't do a condition of shuttles.
Yeah, I think that is great. It looks like 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM has been what they've been doing this summer. Also, 750 is purely aspirational. Perhaps we just put a condition that we cap it at 400 or something more reasonable. If that's...
If they're successful.
Yeah.
That would be easily managed.
Often, do you get 750 at your event?
I mean, we get at most 500.
Do you really?
I think they look like it was almost 500.
Yeah.
So, like, with shuttles, I mean, it's actually pretty minimal impact.
It actually makes a lot of sense to do shuttles, too. And then if people are out there and they decide to have a couple of drinks, or...
Yeah.
And the shuttles seem to work pretty well for the music festival. It seems like they're pretty full. I've used, I've gone on them sometimes, and other times we've decided we wanted to go out to, you know, Fisher Towers and hang out for a minute after the concert, so...
That seems like a really great way to minimize the impact on the locals living out there and, and also good for the environment.
Comfortable making that a condition.
Would the condition be a certain percentage of the attendees have to take a shuttle?
No.
Just that, just that they offer shuttles?
Yeah.
It's hard to enforce it.
Yeah, sure. Well, Kevin had previously said we should probably talk about this in the next briefing.
Okay, yeah. Um, so, so looking, looking at this, a little bit closer, I guess, we, there are also two running events that are wanting to do the same, exactly the same date.
Behind the Rocks.
Mountain biking event.
Yeah. The, the Moab Rocks is a mountain biking, and the Behind the Rocks is a, yeah. Okay, I'm running this one.
Where does the Ultra stage, the Behind the Rocks Ultra?
In San Juan County.
Okay.
Oh, so they stage back where the old, the old 24-hour race course was back?
They probably only use five miles of trail. They barely come into the county, and it's only one of their distance races, the long-distance one does. Most of them stay in San Juan.
And remind me of the Moab Rocks, what areas that uses?
They use Klondike Gloves, they do Mag Seven and Whole Enchilada. And I think, do they just do LPS down or UPS?
Yeah, they have, they go up, they start in town, and they go all the way up to the top of LPS, they come back down the river.
They start from town, they ride up San Juan.
So those two events are pretty separate.
They're very separate, yeah. They're all north of town.
Well, I don't know. I feel pretty good about the events in the early part of the year. That's generally not like the most crazy-packed time of town where we're getting a lot of, like, sound noise complaints, so...
And it looks like every single one of these events, except for the Run the Rocks, is a more of a less legacy event, right?
Which ones not?
Yeah, they all have long history. There's, there's two new events, just one.
Well, the music ones are, yeah, there's two new events.
So do we, do we need yet another early in the year running event since we're already packed with those?
It is, it is, that's kind of the preseason weekend.
I mean, I think if there's nothing else competing...
But are ideas every, every, so ultimately, every single weekend has a large event?
I think that a large event... I think it's fine, depending on the impact of the event.
And, and a large event that is athletic, you know, and most of these aren't motorized, fills our motel rooms with people that are going to be running loud machines.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you're doing, yeah, doing, I know.
Good, well, I, I could feel comfortable with going with that, but, but with the understanding that as we, you know, refine our criteria for events, you know, just because an event has been run one to five years in the past doesn't mean that they can just presume, you know, we might later decide that, hey, you know, we need more music events and fewer running events or something. I, I think as long as we're willing to not tell people that once, once they get approved, they're, they're, you know, they, they continue to get approved unless they really mess up that.
Yeah. Alright, so are we basically checking off events one through eight on our sheet then? Jeep Safari's not, I think we're gonna address that in the next.
With the, the music event, I guess it's still unresolved whether there would be blackout dates to avoid conflicts with them.
Right, so we can look at that in the next quarter and see what events it might conflict with, I guess.
And one thing I would just remind everybody, I'm sure it wouldn't, maybe it wouldn't be often, but especially the first go-through of this, it is possible, along with the conditions, that you have a condition that instead of the Special Event Advisory Committee doing the final approval, that the complete applications come back to all of you to approve or deny. So if there's ones that there are questions around, I don't know that it would cause any damage to say you guys want final approval versus the committee, so something to think about.
Yeah, and looking at the Red Cliffs events this year, I mean, one was the same day as the Street Fest, and one is the same day as one of the days of the Folk Fest, and so we already kind of have some examples of whether those...
Were in conflict with the city, you're saying, Josie?
Or whether it's, you know, just too many things happening at once. My, I mean, my hunch for these is that that hasn't really been the case, but just...
Are we, alright, yeah. So should we move on to the second quarter?
So, second quarter, I'm gonna start with this list, number nine, which is Jeep Safari, and on the agenda summary, which is number 10, Jeep Safari. I'm, I already went through this a little bit, but I'll revisit it. Dates are March 31st through April 9th. 750 total daily attendance, motorized event on trails and with an expo at OSTA. And BLM permit allows up to 50 vehicles per trail. They do stay below their threshold with 25 to 40 vehicles per trail, depending on what trail it is. They have 58 years of history and good standing, and that's what I have for them. Can I tell you more?
Um, my questions revolve sort of around these sub-events and how they, they interact with that.
Yeah, I was gonna keep them separate and touch on those as a group separately. Do you want me to go over to this now?
No, I'll just wait with that, I guess.
Yeah, I was, I was really interested in the separate events, too. Should we look at the events separate, is it, is it truly separate, or should we look at it like...
Not, not really, kind of, sort of. The way the intent to apply is, and the requirements, they are separate because they have SRPs. But it's not additional people at the event. It's still the same number of people. They're just doing something separate on their own SRP.
So the...
And it's, they're private, they're all private.
Right.
What's SRP?
A special recreation permit issued by, a special recreation permit issued by BLM.
Okay, so it's because they have different permits, you have to...
So when you're looking at these numbers here, these numbers are tucked into the 750 of the Jeep Safari, okay?
So they're not additional, they're still the 750. And if they're not new, this is something that's been going on for the same amount of time period. They're just being brought to light now because of the...
The changes. The changes, sure. Well, presumably they're not, not all of them have been going on for fifty-eight years like the Jeep Safari. But, but you're saying all things are things very similar to this typically every year have been going on with the Jeep Safari?
Yes.
Well, what are they?
Um, it depends on which one. So I could touch on a couple of them real quick. So like number nine, which is the FCA, that's GMC Chevrolet Jeep. What they do is they take some of their vendors and customers out, like, let's just call them elites. They go out on trail runs, they get demos, uh, maybe they get to do a sponsor trail, things along those lines. All the groups are small. I think the biggest one as far as attendance is at a hundred, um, but they usually range between thirty to forty people that they pick.
So is it, is it like a lottery?
Not really like a lottery. It's, it's like they take their staff out. So like these, these proofs, like, um, um, Superwinch, they, they come in with like two to three semis with staff and they have, some of them have twenty to thirty staff that come in for the vendor show. So they'll take a day, say it's like Wednesday, and they'll pick a trail and they take their whole staff out and they go out on a trail ride.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And that's just one example. Another, maybe, maybe they have new lockers that they're gonna demo or new tires or something along those lines, but they'll take their, uh, a group of customers out or their employees or their sponsors out on a trail.
So, so I'm comfortable lumping those all together with the Jeep Safari. To me, it just seems like a part of a normal Jeep Safari event. Yeah, that answered my question pretty well too. I, I tend to agree with Kevin.
I mean, do any of those events stand out from that? And they're all kind of the same.
I, I would say they're all the same. They're all businesses, all doing the same thing. There's not anything that would not be business related.
But for the special events backend, does it make sense for them to file separate applications? Not that we would need to approve them, but just like for liability and those kinds of things.
For insurance purposes, because I know the Red Rock Four Wheelers, they're not gonna be under the Red Rock Four Wheelers insurance. They're gonna be under their own business insurance.
Well, and it's also adding kind of trail time to the calendar in general, if they each have their own trail rides that are also going on. I think it's helpful informa- information to kind of understand the cumulative impact.
Yeah, and they follow the Jeep Safari's, um,
Roots.
Their course map. They, they have a pretty organized trail map and they follow that. So they know what trails are available and what ones aren't available.
Alright, just to weigh in on that, guys, I think it's really important to permit these separately. The applicant is different. The trail rides are different. These are commercial uses. Um, BLM does define commercial use as compensation exchanged, including in a workplace environment. So an employee gets a trail ride as a benefit. That's compensation paid. The BLM is permitting these separately. So I do think in terms of our saturation analysis and all that, um, you know, we should be thinking of them as part of Jeep Safari, but also different, so. Angie can also talk to you, but these types of, um, separate but related events are becoming more popular. So I do expect that we're gonna see a lot more of this associated with our bigger motorized events.
Like an event within an event, kind of?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that there's like no extra impact because there may be some of the same participants, because like I said, it's, Jeep Safari is a certain number of trail rides that are permitted. But then this is on top of that. And so that's more vehicles in the desert and trails that are conflicting with other users at the same time. I'm not sure how to like pick them apart or if I'm prepared to do that right now, but I just think it's something like, oh, yeah, we should evaluate these separately and yeah, there is an extra impact because there are more events.
Yeah. And I think as far as evaluating separately, just as far as insurance and liability purposes, but as far as an actual event, it's still the same event. So you could kind of look at it both ways. But they definitely, I think, need to be applied separately for the same reasons Christina just said. But as far as looking at them, it's still the same event. It's not like you're gonna see anything different happening. You're not gonna see a different type of party happening over here during Jeep Safari. It's not anything I think anybody would notice.
Could, I'm just putting this out there, could it be processed in a way where they do have to provide all of those things? They have to get approval, but the main event sponsor also has to sign off on something saying, yes, we've, we confirm these are part of our event. Invite them to participate. We don't take on legal responsibility, taxes, any of that for them, but we are also recognizing that they are a component of our event.
Yeah, because I think also for the purposes of like continued evaluation and actually sort of grading events after they happen, I mean, it would be good to have Jeep Safari kind of own these sub-events as far as reflecting on their overall application. Just to kind of make sure everybody's holding to a similar standard.
So what that looks like, um, having them proceed with the permit and having that go through approval or denial, but also coming up with some kind of condition for the Jeep Safari event? Um, to say, to sign off or to provide something or would?
Well, they're, they're different legal entities. So I think, you know, a Jeep Safari organization is gonna be reluctant to sign on to something with too much red tape. I do think it's important that Jeep Safari is confirming for us that these are their vendors and these are events that, um, you know, their participants are including in, but I think they can do that by email and they can just object if anything isn't associated with Jeep Safari and then form a way without building a lot of red tape around it.
Just like validating, like if I was to send an email saying, these five companies are applying for, um, applications saying that they are coming for the Easter Jeep Safari, can you please validate?
Yeah, and likewise, could we also have those, say, five sub-event companies sign saying, we are, while we don't, you know, we are under Easter Jeep Safari, we are a piece of that. So that if they come in and they end up doing something completely different, there won't necessarily be a liability, but it could be for review of, like, you said you were part of this, we would have uh, potentially evaluated it a little differently because you would have been completely separate.
Well, if we're permitting them, I don't think we need, I mean, we can evaluate that. We, that can be part of our post-event evaluation period, right? I mean, I would assume the narrative that they're submitting is going to tie them to Jeep Safari. We're gonna go through the permit process with them. And then if there's, um, you know, some violation there of any sort, we would deal with it in our hopefully much more expanded post-event evaluation process. What do you think, Valerie? Does that, do you have concerns that aren't being addressed by that?
No, I just am probably overthinking it and I'm wondering if in the application, we could ju- just build in an easy question on both ends of, do you have any, do you anticipate any sub-event companies being tied to this? It doesn't, you know, commit them to anything. It's just that heads up, um, validation and likewise other part. People, the question could be, or are you like a sub-event to a larger one? If so, what event? Just for capturing that information. Because in a post-evaluation, it might be hard if we don't know officially that yes, these were tied together under this event. Am I overthinking that?
We haven't really gotten to see how the narratives are gonna work, I guess. And so it's possible that the narratives would capture it and it's possible that they won't. But I got, I got, I love extra questions, so I got no problem asking questions in an application.
Well, we could ask, um, you know, in the application for the event narrative and of a side note of, you know, these are all of the things you should include, you know, and failure to do so could result in denial. Just, I think people would want to. It's just making sure it's clear. This is where we provide that information.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a deal just having the Red Rock Four Wheelers validating these vendors. I could tell you right now, like, all of these vendors are at the vendor show. I think, I, I know they are.
And maybe the conversation where I'm coming from is just looking at it as not specific to Easter Jeep Safari for any other events.
Yeah.
So, so couldn't we in general, if we've got an event that has these kind of sub-events, we just, it's up to the, the main event applicant to say, hey, when you approve us, we will hope you'll also improve and they, you list all the sub-events. And other, and if they don't do that, then we just treat them as separate events. We might approve some and not others because we weren't informed that they were all related. Seems like that's a general policy that.
Too also. I mean, I would assume that the event holder would know if there's a sub-event happening.
Yeah, it's almost like an endorsement.
But, but if they don't know or if they don't care, I mean, maybe the Jeep Safari doesn't like these, you know, great events that are attached like lampreys, um, so. But, but I, I just, I mean, what I was assuming initially is that, you know, the, these are sort of considered an integral part of the Jeep Safari. It would be kind of awkward if we approved the Jeep Safari but not some of these sub-events. And so I was inclined to do it all as a package, but, but if instead it's true that the Jeep Safari, we just assume that they, you know, these things not be there, that they don't think it adds anything to the event, then they, I think we should treat them as separate events.
So can I throw something else?
Do they, do, I have a question.
Talking about this? So this brings up, um, a perfect example with Cruz Moab. Um, Cruz Moab is, um, developing over their time period and they may be in the situation where they could possibly be having sub-events. Would this be something that you would want to know in the intent to apply or could it happen in the application process?
I just have a question. So I'm, I'm. So the Jeep Safari gives, is the permitter, person that permits. And so part of the permit is this is listed. These are listed on the permit, the, these other, the Wales, Whale Pros, the AEB, those are all listed in the event application.
They're listed as vendors, correct?
Yeah, so I'm.
I thought not just to BLM, but to us as well.
My, my impression is no, that the reason that they're separate on our list is because they're separate as far as the BLM is concerned. Each of them has their own independent, special recreation permit.
Yeah.
But are, are they under Jeep Safari?
As a vendor, but not as a vendor charter.
Okay, so they're, they're, they're under Jeep Safari for their vending part, but separate from their vending part, they're taking their, okay, I got it now.
So in the intent to apply, i- in the workflow, it will have something, do you have any vendors? And if it's yes, then it will go to, okay, what are those vendors? You know, you might not have all of the details in terms of their tax ID, numbers, yada, yada. So we could just say, if, do you have any vendors, if they click? Or even, do you have any vendors or sub-events? Like click yes, then it's just saying, okay, which ones?
Yeah.
Kind of captures that without tying anybody to anything. It's just another, you know, area we could capture that information. So we know if they're tied together.
Yeah, and I, I think that it's good information to have and sure, we should help get on the application. But I also think that given that they're just, they're in town, they're vendors, they're trying to then use their position and their influence or whatever to make their own events. We should definitely evaluate them as their own event. Do, do we have pretty, um, like explicit, uh, confirmation that their rides are sort of more friends and family kind of rides rather than?
They list it out. They say, um, what they're doing, that it's a, it's for their, one says creation and customer tours, one says, um, just for employees, um, secret trail route. They say employees, so they list it out what they're doing.
Yeah, because I mean, I think it's worth extra scrutiny here, especially because this is a very large motorized event. But something that came up in the last special events meeting was kind of, uh, an analogous situation with something like Outer Bike where there might be, um, like trail rides with employees of a specific vendor. And, you know, whether we treat that the same way, is that the same thing? You know, what's our kind of broader philosophy here?
Well, I think Sarah, you said evaluate, and that made me think of like a huge part of this, the post-event evaluation. So yeah, if we have this way to evaluate from our referral agencies, you know, various people involved, that's important. But if we knew that there were sub-events, we could have the main event, you know, have some questions in there as about if they have any negative issues with any of their sub-events.
So given that we have limited time, I'm just wondering if we should move on from this topic or something?
Yes.
Sure, I'm, I'm kind of just looking for like a general, like, how many extra trail rides are we talking about in these sub-events?
This isn't even all of them. Like all of the vendors, like we don't know what all the other vendors are doing.
So these are only the ones with SRPs and some vendors don't get SRPs?
Two weeks since I sent out the email to five hundred people.
These are the ones that are reciprocating and applying.
And so Jeep Safari has kind of a, a limited number of trail rides that they are allowed, like a kind of quota, and then these are in addition. Do that or?
These will be the same trails.
Right, but additional, uh, reps on those.
Yeah, so like say, let's just use Fins and Things as an example. So Fins and Things, the trail leaves at eight o'clock in the morning. They, they leave, then maybe Superwinch wants to start it and run it at one o'clock. So they'll run it at one.
Right, so I, I do agree with Kevin that we should probably move on to get to the rest of the list, but I do think this is, we have to kind of put a pin in this because it is this kind of added impact to that if we just kind of go, oh, it's just part of this, then we're not really cataloging that properly.
And this could come back to like a condition to something that you see again. So this was just the intent to apply that we're being um, presented with right now, but when it comes to the application process, then we would get into, okay, what's your course map? What are you doing? What day? What, what are you doing on what types?
Right.
Um, that's when we would get more of those detailed information.
And maybe.
It also sounds like the kind of thing that the BLM presumably is thinking about. So I don't know that it makes sense for us to think about who's scheduled on which trails when.
Right.
Independently of what the BLM is doing.
But would we want to condition a cap?
That's part of the application process. As far as what courses they're on, at what types.
Right. Yeah, and especially knowing that we don't have the full list of vendors doing these activities. I mean, it would be good to have kind of a cap or a general sense of limitation. Yeah, I guess like looking at big picture and like, okay, if Jeep Safari, we clump in all of these events and sub-events, that's better than spreading out motorized events on every single weekend on all of those trails. So, I don't know.
I mean, I.
We need to move on.
Yeah, I was.
Keep, keep going.
Yeah, let's get, uh, what's the next one? It was number fifteen.
So number fifteen is the Green River Dirt Bike Rally.
Or we missed the Rabbi Passover adventure.
Oh, I didn't get this list. Oh, so number fifteen is the rabbi. Where is that? It's not on the agenda.
Oh, because it was considered a low-impact event. That's why it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
So that one needs to be crossed off. Yeah.
So we don't, we're not worrying about number fifteen on our list?
No, we're going on this list. You'll be jumping to number sixteen.
Looks pretty interesting.
What's still happening, we just don't.
They do Shabbos, they do Seder, they go high, they go home.
Yeah, so, uh, so number seventeen on the agenda is the.
Green River Dirt Bike Rally.
Green River Dirt Bike Rally. It's a motorized and expo event. The dates are April thirteenth through fifteenth. The total daily attendance is four hundred and thirty. Um, this event is primarily centered, centralized in Green River. The reason why they're applying for a Grand County permit is because fifteen people, so fifteen motorcycles, um, will be doing a trail in Grand County, in the whitewash, um, sand dunes area. This, this, that trail is more of what you would consider like expert level. It's a harder course. So that's why only fifteen of those motorcycles will be going onto that trail. Um, minimal attendance, um, motos, motos will be trailered and tracked to the trailhead. And, um, as far as history, there's been no SAR extractions or anything, um, that promotes concern history-wise as far as this event.
So that attendance number, that doesn't reflect the number of people in Grand County, you're saying?
Because it's, it's, yeah, it's centralized in Green River. The expo, all of that will be happening in Green River. The only thing that's entering Grand County is the one-day trail that will be happening. The only thing that's entering Grand County is the one-day trail that will be happening with the fifteen motorcycles.
And did I see that the promoter was actually the city of Green River?
Yes.
And I feel like it's not our place to deny their, their event for fifteen vehicles.
And she told me last year they sent out five guides with those fifteen people, so each guide had three people.
Right, it's good, uh, good guy to climb.
What was the name of the trail?
Uh, it's the way, at the whitewash sand dunes, like open OHB area, right?
Oh, the one, when the, off of Floyd, Floyd, you go away.
Right, yeah, exactly.
And did, um, did Grand County Search and Rescue sign off on this, or they just gave details from past events?
I called Aaron and he sent me a heat map and I asked him, I said, are there any specific events that you're concerned about? And the only one he mentioned was the base jumping event that happened. Um, but he told me that the answer to that question was super complicated, but I just looked at the heat map this morning and most of the stuff that happens involves Jeeps and ATVs honestly.
Right.
But very specific incidences.
When I think that, uh, yeah, that, that follow-up again, like continuing to, you know, if, if this event happens, assessing what happened on the, um, kind of safety and search and rescue side.
He said that most events are, do self-extractions, but the reason they don't call search and rescue as much is because they have the capacity to take care of the situation themselves.
Which is probably true of this event.
Yeah, all of the guides are not Wolfher certified, but they all have CPA, First Aid, Life Support.
And that's something, going through the process, if the intent to apply is approved, it would then be approved by, the final application would be approved by the Special Event Advisory Committee, who would need search and rescue to sign off and provide any conditions.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the Dirt Bike Rally?
Nope. So number sixteen, which is seventeen, so now we're, our number they're getting, we're one off on the sheet. Um, sixteen on the agenda is Amnesty Trail Race Athletic Competition, April fifteenth. Total daily attendance is three hundred and ten. Um, it's a running event using Amnesty Back Area, thirteen years of history, good standing. And the ITA was approved by, um, SEC before the processing change.
Is that a local, uh, promoter?
That's the names.
It is, okay.
Those used to be Chris's race.
Yeah, right, right.
I'm assuming the staging happens out there?
Um, right at the parking lot.
So it's the-
I mean, what I've heard from like different members of the community, especially about that specific spot, like a Mossaback parking lot, is just that it's, it's madness out there, especially on these big weekends in April when also there's a ton of tourists. And so I don't know if there's a, a different place where they could stage something like that.
It's only on the road for, around that first parking lot, not in Mosses.
Oh, okay.
And, um, it's on the show by the way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually with the new trails, they're probably on the trail sooner, because we used to run with the Jeep.
Right, but now, so you run up to the lower trail on the creek now, the hill.
Okay, so that's, is perhaps a different race I was hearing about. Okay.
What is, I mean, I've, I've also participated in this one, but a few, it's been a few years, but I, I mean, I share your concern about, you know, this kind of craziness, and I, and I do think we already have lots of running events, and I, I think we should be a little more selective or just think about posing conditions. I don't know if this is the one that's-
I, I, yeah, I would say, I mean, it's, it's on April fifteenth, which is Saturday, and it's literally about the busiest time of the year for, for bike rentals and such. Mossaback's one of the very busiest trailheads in the areas there. That is going to be a bit of a cluster.
It would be interesting to know what time they start. I mean, I remember it was really early. But to me, if they could started at seven and be out of there, right?
Yeah.
But that, that place is just madness all the time.
Yeah. It's gotten-
Other than like January. We could also offer the suggestion of using the shuttle.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Stage at the middle school or the elementary school or something.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Wasn't, wasn't one of the concerns with the Mossaback area last year also, they had a, they had packet pickup out there, and I think that created a huge, uh, they had their, their packet pickup was actually out at the trailhead last fall, and so there's, it was literally like two days of just massive interference instead of just one. So if packet pickup could be in town, that would make a huge difference too.
And last year, did they say it was because of COVID and they had to do?
I don't remember, but that was, uh, that was, uh, Danelle's-
So the, the fifteenth is a, is a Wednesday?
It's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, yeah. I've, I'm looking at April, am I on the wrong month?
Oh, oh, maybe I got-
No, you know, I'm on the wrong month, so.
So it's the other fifteenth.
Yeah, Saturday, sorry, yeah, that's a- And that, that's, that's when the weekend traffic gets, yeah, it blows up, and it's really big. But anyway.
I, I like suggesting the, the shuttle and at least making sure that packet pickup and staging is not at the Mossaback. Um.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, when you look back at this race, I can't remember how, it's been around for a long time, and yeah, it was back in the day when there weren't many people out there. So, but, yeah. To make sure.
There's your, yeah, there's your good, good questions for this one, I think.
Okay, number seventeen on the agenda is Cruz Moab Rising Sun. It's a motorized, um, expo at OSA with camping. The dates are April seventeenth through the twenty-second. Total daily attendance is five hundred and fifty-five. They have twenty-five years of history and good standing. Um, they limit their registration to two hundred and fifty vehicles. That also includes their vendors. They require their vendors to register, and then they only allow twenty rigs per trail. And that's a date.
So it's all-road vehicles? I, I, I honestly can't recall Cruz Moab.
It's Toyota.
Oh, it's Toyota, okay, interesting, gotcha. So it's similar to, it's like a mini Jeep Safari, but using Toyotas instead of Jeeps. Okay, gotcha.
And they, um, limit the number of people on the trail.
Yeah.
And the number of vehicles.
Yeah, they're at their max of what they want to be, and I just spoke to him this morning. He's, they're as big as they want to get. Okay, so moving on, number eighteen is Grand Circle Trail Fest. This is a new event. Um, it's an athletic running event with expos at OSA and camping. The dates will be April twenty-sixth through the thirtieth. Total daily attendance will be seven hundred. Um, running event using Pritchett and Hunter Canyon, King Springs, um, BS Boy Scouts, uh, Base Camp, Gemini Bridges, and Porcupine Rim Trails.
So, so this is kind of like Jeep Safari for runners?
Right, right. They've been really excited about this event. They tried doing it over the past couple of years, but with COVID, it kept pushing things out, um, so.
But it's, it's like all-inclusive, they come and they camp at OSA, they do like food trucks or something out there, and then?
Yep, yep, food, camping, the expo will be there, they'll be leaving from-
Do they have shuttles themselves to the trailheads too?
They'll be doing shuttles.
So that you can park and leave your car and then just take the shuttle to the run?
Trails are really miserable. Trail runs.
Hard ones, anyway.
Um, where are they from?
Um, uh, it's throwing me off. I want to say he's out of Colorado, if I remember. Right.
Right.
I, I think they come out of Colorado.
Of all the running events so far, this is the one I'm like, well, it hasn't happened yet, and it's not very busy.
On the application, it says Washington, Utah.
Washington, Utah, right. Craig Dunn.
It was, like, I think when I first met them, it was right before COVID hit, so it's been a couple of years since I've seen him in person. We've been trying to get this one off the ground for a while.
Right.
It's a bit of a different paradigm than the other events. For better or worse.
Okay, we're halfway done through our time, so if you can try to get through the list quickly.
So number nineteen, Building Man, um, festival, dates are April twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, total daily attendance, five hundred. Private property with additional use permit, music and sustainability festival, twelve years of history with good standing.
They're over near Green River.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's like just barely in the county, yeah.
Have you, uh, is anyone, I'm sure-
In the past.
You've been in the past yet?
Yeah, it's been a while, but-
I wouldn't expect that, um, there'd be a lot of spillover into Moab, or is that, is that true?
No, I think a lot of people from Moab just go up there, but I don't think anybody comes down here.
I want to know what's happening out there. No, never mind.
It's actually, I mean, there's like a lot of permaculture projects and things like that. I mean, there is like also all night music and things like that, but it's a, it's a pretty-
But it's, it's out in the desert, the, uh, northeast of Green River.
Oh, I'd say it's mostly good.
But I bet Evans attended this event. Building Man Evans?
I have.
A celebration of the main course trail.
Are you sure you haven't attended where you just-
So can, I am worried we're going to run out of time before we make the assisions, so maybe we can just-
Just keep going?
Yep.
Okay, so now we're going into May attendance. Uh, we have number twenty, this is Bicarpelli. This is actually two events in back-to-back weekends. The first date is, uh, May fourth through May sixth, and then May eleventh through the thirteenth. Total daily attendance is ninety-eight per weekend. Uh, this is a gravel mi- mountain bike event using Cocapelli Trail from Fruta to Moab. Um, fully supported event with food, staff, medical, um, over twenty years of good history standing.
And I, as a disclosure, I've provided shuttles to this event in the past from, from my business, and, uh, it's, um, they're, they're, they've been great to work with, and I, they're mostly in the backcountry. They only come into Moab on the very last day, and then we actually shuttle them right out, so. Anyway.
It says they have zero years.
It's the first time they've applied for a permit?
Okay.
Yeah.
And this is also an event that starts in Colorado and then comes into-
Yeah.
Starts in Fruta.
Right, yeah.
Oh, that's a long bike route.
Okay.
Longer run.
Um, number twenty-one is Bronco Safari. This is a motorized expo at OSA and on the trails. Dates are May second through May sixth. Total daily attendance is three hundred and thirty-five people, with a hundred and seventy-five of those people being registered vehicles. Um, twelve years of good standing history. This event is mostly more like, I don't want to call them antique, but, um, vehicles that are-
The vi- the vintage Broncos, like the-
Vintage, yeah.
Seventies, right, yeah.
Um, they are becoming more popular with the release of the new Broncos that are joining the clubs, and their club's growing. Um, and they're seeing that, but, um, still, uh, more of a expensive hobby.
Yeah, great.
So you said there's three hundred and thirty-five people, but how many vehicles?
Hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy-five.
And how many do they allow on a trail?
You know, I didn't get, break down all those specifics, but BLM caps theirs at fifty, so there's, there's never going to be any more than fifty, and I, that's, I could confirm this and get back to you. I think that's just a Jeep Safari number. I think BLM likes to keep it closer to thirty-five.
And this is, this is just a one-day event?
No, she said two.
No, it's the second through the sixth.
Yeah, it's on our paper. It says just the fifth.
That Friday, which is the fifth, that's when they'll have their expo. They call it a show and shine at OSA, and they'll be at the pavilion.
So they don't do rides on Friday?
I'm sorry, say that again?
They don't do, they don't ride, do trails on Friday to Saturday?
They do trails, and then they meet at OSA for a dinner at what they call a show and shine. They just kind of show their, their cars off. It was a little small expo. There's a couple vendors there, not many. Um, number twenty-two is the Grand Fondo in Moab, um, athletic competition, May sixth. Total daily attendance is six hundred and twenty-five. It's a road bike event using the Loop Road, nine years of history and good standings. Number twenty-three is Raptors on the Rocks. This is a motorized event with an expo at OSA with light camping. Um, dates are May eleventh through the fourteenth. Total daily attendance is a hundred and twenty-five. Um, history is usually about forty registered trucks, and they're in good standing, good history. Number twenty-four is the Colorado to Utah Athletic Competition, um, gravel bike event using Book Cliff area roads, May thirteenth. Total daily attendance is five hundred and sixty. They're going to start in Fruta and ride the Book Cliffs and back. Only, um, some of the riders are doing that, not the full five hundred and sixty.
So most of it's in Colorado?
Yeah, most of it's in Colorado. This event does require, um, Grand County Sheriff Office for security, um, due to the oil fields. Number twenty-five is Jeep Jamboree. It's a motorized event. Dates are May eighth through the twentieth. Total daily attendance is two hundred and fifty. Um, they do have additional date, they have one other event in October. Um, they have twenty-five years of history, um, for their fall events, and they're in good standing, history.
So they only have, they have twenty, this is their first spring event?
This will actually be their second spring event.
And how many vehicles did you say?
Two hundred and fifty.
That's vehicles or people?
That's going to be vehicles.
Okay, so this one, mo- most of these numbers on, in the column are people, but this one's vehicles?
I feel like I'm contradicting myself a little bit with that. Um. Yeah, because if I split this one in half, I would have to look at their October one to give you an honest answer on that one. Cause I know their October one's bigger, and that one's closer to three hundred vehicles, but he didn't expect his spring one to be as big.
Yeah, and I think moving forward for the ITA process, we definitely need a separate vehicle count for all the motorized events.
And then on his ITA for, under his total attendance, he put two fifty.
Yeah.
Um, I could get that, I know I can make a quick phone call and have that wrapped up for you before you push it.
So for all the other motorized events, we're talking people and not vehicles?
Angie, I have a question about that oil field security. Which event was that? Who determined?
That was the Colorado to, that was the Colorado to Utah.
Who determines oil fields need security?
Like, that came from Grand County Sheriff. They requested that on this past one, um, during the SEC review.
Huh, okay, interesting. I'll talk with them about it, thanks.
Uh-huh.
So, so I looked at the applicant, on their application, they do say between two hundred and two twenty-five or fifty pe- people.
Yeah, that was the total, and I know he was, um, planning for the spring one to be smaller. So that's probably accurate, but I can't get that confirmed. I know I could get ahold of him. Um, number twenty-six, the Willie's Rally. It's motorized exhibit, um, May nineteenth through twenty-first. Total daily attendance is a hundred. Um, mostly exhibits with a few short trail runs, staged exhibit at Red Cliffs Lodge.
Are the, are these all the vintage Willie's Jeeps, like the World War II era Jeeps and such? Right, right.
Yeah.
So they're not driving along.
They are cool.
Um, Gone Moab is a motorized event with a dinner, um, at OSA. They're probably renting the pavilion with light camping, May twenty-first to the twenty-sixth. Total daily attendance is a hundred and forty-five people, seventy vehicles. They have twenty-two years of history.
What, is there anything that sets them apart? Are they, what, what, what do they do? Just trail runs also, or?
Their Nissan.
Oh, okay, gotcha, right, right. So it's all, it's all kind of branded then.
And then now we are going into June, intent to applies. Number twenty-eight is the Canyonlands PRCA Rodeo.
We don't, the barrels for bucks?
Barrels for bucks?
That was determined to be a low-impact event.
Yeah, so that was pulled off. So, number twenty on the agenda is Canyonlands PRCA Rodeo. It's a athletic livestock competition event. Um, at OSA, the dates are June second through June fourth. Total daily attendance is in the ten thousand fifty-plus range.
One thousand or ten?
One thousand, sorry. I was trying to figure, as I was coming out, like, do I say one thousand fifty, or do I say? If that came out wrong, had a moment. Uh, that would be an impressive rodeo. Um, there is a county resolution in place, um, seventy-three years of history, and they're in good standing. Um, number twenty-nine is the Moab Music Festival, High Water. This is a ten-day total event, and Josie, I'm hoping that you could help with this. I went back and forth on it, on how to present it. I'm, I have on the application June ninth through twelfth, which is the four days of music, but it's actually a ten-day event. Um, and the six days, the other six days will are proposed part of a guided river trip.
Yeah, and I think, um, and this might be something for the special events coordinator and department in general, is like how we treat something like a river trip, because that's got its kind of own.
You know.
You know, universe going on, so I don't know if that's something that we need to permit. But I also should recuse myself from this conversation right now.
Cuz it it's separate. So the actual attend is for four days, but the event is for ten days.
So four days.
That makes sense.
It's essentially two weekends.
Same people?
Uh, yes.
Yes, one hundred to three hundred. Sorry, I did not say that.
So it's musi- only mu- uh, is it? Concert goers and the musicians, or is it just for the musicians?
The numbers, you mean? Oh, the numbers are the concert goers. We don't have three hundred musicians. But I also, I I don't think that it's appropriate for me to like talk as a representative of the music festival in this context.
Yeah, questions? Okay. Um, number thirty, Desert Rats Cocopelli one fifty. It's athletic event, June nineteenth through the twenty-fourth. Total daily attendance is sixty. Um, running event using the Cocopelli Trail, twenty years of history. This event with the dates um, and the trail, they do require a physical for registration. That is all of them.
Alright, yeah, thanks Angie.
Um, so I'll get that one answer for you before, but would you like me to present it the same way? Or?
I, do we need to go through them each one by one?
I don't think we need to go through them each. We could, in in the commission when we do the um, when we actually.
What's the motion? How does the motion?
I'm sorry, was, uh, Mary was asking how we, or if we didn't, we don't need to present them each individually when the agenda item comes up during.
No, no, I mean, I think we should figure out it.
Figure out, right, do most of the heavy lifting right now and then we can just blanket, say, we're gonna approve like, say, one through nine.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, what you guys, how you guys wanted me to do that.
Yeah. So now we need to get down into the nitty gritty of, of which events.
So, um, next year, these will be the blue ones, the winter ones, I guess you could call it, would be presented.
Yes, they'd be, yeah, they'd be, they'd be.
So this is we're doing the spring and the fall, correct? We're always.
Always three months ahead, yeah. Six months, six months, I'm sorry, six months ahead, right? Alright, so you had an idea about how you wanna, so again, I think it makes sense to, unless, you know, some of these events have been going on for a large number of years, like ten or twelve or more, um, you know, I think with those presum- presumptively, they're okay unless someone wants a single one out to say we shouldn't approve it. And then conversely, the the others that are brand new or have only been going for a year or two, I, you know, there, I think, kind of the burden of, we should look at those closely and see, is that, you know, adding something that we don't already have from the existing events, so. Kate, do you wanna go through and 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 check off a few that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, so Easter Jeep Safari obviously has been going on for a while. Yeah, and and I, I mean, going going back to that conversation about the sub events, I mean, I just think of it as one big lump. I mean, I I think, you know, we know what the Jeep Safari is like. We we know, you know, it's it's a well-known thing of impacts, and so unless they're proposing some kind of change, I would just tend to approve all of those things together. Um, you know, maybe next year we.
Yeah, I I I'd agree with you on that. I think that's a good idea and then maybe do a, do a shift in how they get, like if they get approved under the umbrella of the.
But but maybe go- going forwards for next year's Jeep Safari, we could get in touch with BLM early, you know, ask them, you know, what's the whole landscape of these sub events, you know, related, associated, special recreation permits?
Right.
And then ask them what the trend is. Is it, is this something that's getting a lot bigger than it used to, you know?
Yeah.
If we're approving the Jeep Safari based on impacts we remember over the past five years, is what's being proposed for this year the same as that? Or is it significantly larger because of these sub events? I I think that's the question we wanna answer.
Yep.
That that sounds like a good idea. Um, so the next, going down, the the next one that, you know, is a brand new event is this Green River Dirt Bike Rally.
Yep.
But it sounded like our consensus is this is almost entirely outside of Grand County.
Yeah, it sounds like it's outside of Grand County. It's put on by the city of Green River. They just have a small, small event inside Grand County at the far fringe of the county.
The adrenaline seekers.
Right, doesn't, doesn't ring any alarm bells.
Um, and then the the next one, the Amasa Trail Race, we discussed some potential conditions there, right? Yeah, I I think we, I mean, I forget who this Trish who suggested that maybe we should suggest a condition that none of the staging and, you know, or packet pickup that.
Packet pickup, right, yeah.
Stay away from that parking lot.
Yeah, packet pickup can be running the race.
In town, and then, and then if they could utilize shuttles, that'd be great also.
And also figure out what, you know, the earlier the better as far as that goes out.
Yeah, I do remember, I think I ran, maybe it was eight years ago, and I I forgot to mention, set a course record for, you know, someone over four, but um, had to, had to get that in there.
Barely broken mine.
It was, it was a soft record, I think. I think it was a pretty soft record. But when when I was there, yeah, it didn't seem crowded. I mean, it occupied the whole parking lot. I don't remember a lot of other users and users going through there. It seemed like it got done relatively early in the morning, but on the other.
Things have changed on Amasa back. The the new trails that have been built out there have made that an immensely popular mountain biking area. Plus you even have like the base jumping crowd out there frequently and other, other folks. But yeah, I I, yeah, I'm I'm comfortable with this one.
And that was prior to when the Amasa back trailhead was built proper.
Me, oh, sorry.
Right, it was expanded.
Okay, okay, then uh.
So, so we're just gonna ask them, so Angie asks them to to stage it in town rather than.
Well, I'll packet pick up and yeah, we can get shuttles.
Angie, are you taking notes on this?
Earlier the better packet pickup offer shuttle would be a good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, Cruz Moab, we're up to? Um, right, I think, well, I guess I was just doing the ones that are relatively. Oh, right, right, gotcha. Unless someone has an older event that they wanna flag. Um, so the next newish event is um, Trail Fest.
Trail Fest.
Is like a new running event, fairly large attendance.
I don't, I I'm, I feel like it it hasn't happened yet and we've been talking about how many trail events we have. And if we want to X a running event, this is the one I would do. It's at like peak season. It's across the whole week. It's, people aren't staying in hotels, they're all camping.
You think so, all of them?
It's money coming into the county though. It's out of Osta, it's out of county facility.
What?
It's, it's being hosted out of county facility.
It not at a county?
It is, it is bringing money into the county as in terms of Osta rent, right? Uh, Angie, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I think so.
See, I'm, I'm always looking at uh, you know, if these people are in town, then less noisy, uh, recreational, don't have as much choice.
Yeah, I I don't know if we're gonna solve our crowding problem just by stuffing the hotels as full as we can. There's, there's a lot of hotel rooms here, so skeptical of that strategy. Um, and and I I sort of agree with Sarah that, and I mean, I I like running events, you know, as as evident by the the past item. But, you, we've got a ton of them already.
Most of them.
Yeah, we've got a lot of them. I I think the ones, you know, especially, you know, utilizing the trails that are closest to town, which are also where people go, wanna go hiking or mountain bike riding, you know, just have, you know, going on a hike and that coincides on the day where there's like a several hundred people doing a trail race. That's not so great. I mean, so I think they're preempting a lot of people. So I I think this is a new event. They're doing, s- many of the trails seem closer to town, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, so I'm I'm just not sure we need, and and I I guess just sort of a more general comment is I I think the point of this process, we've know from past experience that we have trouble saying no if we're just presented with one event at a time. And doing it this way allows us to look at the whole spectrum of events that we're seeing. And what I'm seeing here is that April's really crowded and we got lots of other running events, so it's not like having one more is gonna add to a variety. So.
Just, just, I I pulled up the, the trails are gonna be on at the Pritchett Arch, Hunter Canyon Loop Trail, Kane Springs Road, uh, the Boy Scout, Moab Base Camp, I guess that's out in uh, is it Bull Canyon, right, or Gemini Road, yeah, um, Gemini Bridges Trail and Porcupine Room.
Well, Hunter Canyon, single track.
There's no trail right now. So it just got blown out. I mean, I think it's worth noting, it seems like first quarter is very running, heavy, second quarter is very like motorized vehicle heavy. So in general, I I know the discussion is towards more event diversification and um, I'm not sure if the way to do that is to like single up, out preemptively a single event, though I understand what's being said. But I I think my larger question is how are we starting to court that diversity in events? Or do we wanna decide as a body that we want certain times of the year that have no events? Which it seems like that again is a larger conversation that's not about a single event.
It's also a little bit self-regulating. Winter obviously doesn't have too many events and middle of summer is usually pretty, pretty light also.
If, yeah.
I mean, I wasn't meaning to single them out, but I I guess I was putting out the idea that if if it's a new event, there's like a heavy burden of proof on them. And and I think, you know, if it's mostly not in Grand County, we can say yes. If it's some kind of a, you know, event, maybe music or something that we don't have a whole lot of, that's the reason to say yes. But if it's, but I think we've already got lots of running events, we've got lots of biking events, we've got lots of motorized events. And so I don't feel enthusiastic about adding still more of them unless there's some good reason to do it. Now, Angie's offered the reason that we'll get some fees at Osta. That's, um, but I don't, to me, I don't know that that by itself is persuasive.
Do you mind if I ask Angie what kind of, uh, like, what are we talking about as far as an event like this bringing in, uh, financially?
With camping and these numbers, we're looking between twelve to seventeen thousand.
Twelve to seventeen thousand.
That is that base sum. I think we need to be careful. I mean, I've asked August that question. He says we have no metric by which to evaluate the economic impact of special events right now.
She's just talking about.
This, this is just the Osta fees, Christina, not the.
I I'm going off of just.
Yeah, right, right.
Like, I don't have everything that they're renting figured out that hasn't.
But some somewhere in that range.
But they're, they're renting the full facility, so it depends on how that breaks down, plus camping. You're figuring seven hundred people at thirty dollars a night for um, for a week. It's gonna add up.
My inner Chris kicks in here of remembering that we are like, it doesn't, it's a community facility. So it's not revenue driven. It's more.
But it helps us stay, helps us get closer to black.
I do wonder, Kevin, if if you were to talk to these organizers and say, have you considered trails? Like, we think about stuff that's a little bit farther. It's hard for me to pick places in the county now that are a little bit out. But I think about like that, you know, top of the world, that area out there. You know what I mean? Stuff that, would they be willing to consider stuff a little bit farther from town?
I mean, I I think that would be a small improvement, but I I just feel like there's already quite a bit of commercialization of non-motorized trails with these foot races. And I I love foot races, you know, I like to do it, but I don't like them, you know, twelve or fifteen times a year. That just seems like too much to me. And so I I think, you know, if we're gonna ever, I mean, you know, we could just say yes to every event, which would seem kinda silly after all the work we've gone through to through this process. But if this, this seems like a candidate for a no to no.
I I think if any running event would be a candidate for that, it would be this. I will say as a, as a, as a business person, I I love the running events, even though I ran a bike shop. Cuz there's, there's this spillover to different things. I, so many times, people would stick around and they'd, they'd, they'd spend a ton of money in town renting bikes, going on tours, just eating out and stuff like that. So it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty nice for the business community.
Yeah, and they're low, they are low impact.
They're generally very pleasant, low, yeah, I think low impact more, kinda what you're looking for, uh, visitors. What should we move on through the list and come back to it? Uh, Trail Fest, uh, Building Man, that's more of a legacy event, I guess, or, yeah, I was, okay.
It's also far, far from Moab.
It's helping out, right?
Where's uh?
I would say Biker Pally is also a legacy event. It just hadn't applied for a permit here.
Right. I know, I know, he's been doing that for, for at least. Yeah, twelve years, I was gonna say.
Okay, and and it's for the most part, it takes place.
It's mostly out, out in the, yeah, out, but out like west water area and down through, uh, yeah, Dewey. Raptors on the Rocks, is that?
That's, so that's a relatively new event.
Third year, okay. And this is, this is Ford Raptors? It's like, it's like, so it's again, it's like a.
Yes.
I also don't wanna rule out talking about um, the Bronco Club. As it is in a long lineup of motorized events every other weekend, and it's huge. And it's the youngest one of those motorized events. Like it follows Jeep Safari and Cruz Moab.
Right, and Raptors and then Jamboree.
But I, let's go through the other newer events, motorized events in May and maybe look at that. I just don't wanna rule out.
So where were we on Raptors on the Rocks, right?
Yeah, I mean, I I do, I think we've, we've got all the running events we need already. I I think that's also true for motorized events. But I, I w- I will say that, um, you know, it's a lot quieter than like, you know, these full-size vehicles are not usually what people are complaining about, and that's worth keeping in mind.
The Raptors are all relatively new, I think, right? So they have ostensibly, I think they're, have better sound suppression systems, etc.
So that maybe.
It's a Ford Raptor. It's a, it's a, yeah, sporty. It's not a dinosaur. Burns dinosaurs.
She's got one in her driveway.
But yeah, it's, it is only its third year and.
Yeah, I think also, I mean, just looking at the calendar, I think it's helpful kind of noticing which events are like a single day, like a running event that's a single day versus uh, like a week-long motorized.
Right.
Cuz those feel like very different impacts.
Yeah, I I agree, yeah. Is, so it was Raptors, uh, Osta one also?
Is Raptors a what?
Osta, are they?
Yes.
They are, okay.
This is just a thought, you know, we're, we're saying that there's too many, many motorized uh, uh, events in this time period. I mean, uh, is it a possibility, uh, some of these events to produce, you know, do their event more in our slower season, even though it's hot, they're inside uh, air-conditioned vehicles? I mean, say, you know, this, anyway, as a path forward, if they didn't, if they wanted to move forward during the slow.
Yeah.
Time of year might be a, a, you know, possibility of asking them to do.
I I also wonder, moving forward, about the idea of creating like a maximum amount of event days per a single kind of type of event, which would be a much more like sort of judicious, nonspecific way to sort of equalize some of these. I don't know what that process looks like, but.
Sorry, could you say that again?
So like, for instance, running versus motorized versus, I mean, those seem to be the dominant ones, so it's it's silly to limit other things yet cuz we just aren't flooded with them. But to have, you know, a maximum per year, per calendar year, number of event days, now like, you know, that we are willing to approve as a body.
For for a particular event type, you're saying?
Yeah.
Any consensus on Raptor on the Rocks?
I think that's one, I think we should look at this clump of motorized events in whole in May. And I think that's one that could be cut.
So you're talking Bronco Club, Raptor on the Rocks, Jeep Jamboree, more or less, there's three.
Willie's Rally, Gone Moab.
Oh, right, Gone Moab, yeah.
I mean, there's a ton, you know, five all lined up for May, so I feel like we need to at least, you know, sit on that, note it with you. Um, but as far as they go, Raptors on the Rock, it's only forty vehicles compared to some of the other bigger ones like Jeep Jamboree.
Um, he just texted me, it's only, they limit it at a hundred registered vehicles with twenty-five additional vehicles being guide vehicles. So it's a hundred and twenty-five vehicles.
Oh, it's, we're talking big Jeep Jamboree.
Sorry, I gave that.
The two hundred and fifty was.
Was accurate, yeah, sorry.
People and then two hundred and fifty people.
Forty, yes.
One twenty-five vehicles.
And then Gon Moab, how many vehicles were we talking?
That would be seventy vehicles, a hundred and forty-five people.
But that one's been going on twenty-two years.
Okay.
So it's harder for me to say no to, I guess.
Okay, so maybe just skipping skipping ahead and post-putting discussion on the clump of motorized events, there's the
Right.
Relatively new event is the Moab Musical Festival High Water. I mean, I I think that is, that is adding diversity.
I I love those Moab Music Festival events, so.
So is the concerts in town? Or close to town? It's again. Oh, is the concert, the concert's not in the back country or is that or?
There are two, I think, that are happening in like City Park or something like that, and there's private property involved.
One in Old City Park, one on private property. I think they're trying to do like a float trip with Canyonlands by Night and then two music hikes.
Yeah.
Um, and and I misspoke before, it's not two weekends, it's a long weekend.
Long weekend, okay. It's also, it's also past our prime season, it's getting into the summer seasons when things slow down considerably in town.
Yeah, this one is is later than last.
Yeah. The sixth and ninth, yeah, usually we'll get some carryover in the first week of June and then it and then it drops off precipitously as far as visitation.
Yeah. Sounds great.
So we're okay with that, is that what we decided?
I think so, yeah. Unless you're not, Mary.
Well, I I like the Moab Music Festival, it's been around, maybe this event hasn't been around, but Moab Music Festival's been around a long time, they run I think they run a real tight ship. I like, I, yeah.
Then we didn't, we didn't talk the Colorado to Utah gravel event, that's kind of out north in the Book Cliffs area, any opposition to that one?
Excellent. Okay. And then similarly, the the last one, this Desert Rats Races. That's very fairly new, but it's relatively few participants, on the Coo Coo Pili Trails, for the most part not close to us.
Yeah.
It's been happening since two thousand and four, yeah, it's been around for a while.
I was going by the number in the table here.
Seems like a horrible time of year to run the Coo Coo Pili Trail.
No, it wasn't script.
They leave real early.
Um, so so what, so the unresolved thing, so there's the uh the Trail Fest?
Trail Fest and Jeep Jamboree seem like the two.
Yeah. So the Jeep Jamboree has been going on in the fall for a long time, and now they want to expand to the spring as well, is that?
Yeah, they've done one in the spring before. They're just like to do it again.
Is is the Willie's Rally in any way associated with the Jeep Jamboree? Okay, totally separate.
Um, I think we say no to the Jeep Jamboree, they already have entire week in the fall, but they've been doing it for a long time. It's a relatively large event, a hundred and twenty-five vehicles. That's what I think.
Is that uh organized by?
It's ordered by, organized by Jeep.
Oh, it's not?
It's not a little.
It's not the Jeep Safari, right? And like you said, and they still, so this year they'll be applying for a fall time slot also?
Yes, in October.
Okay.
I'm also, I mean, Willie's Rally is about the new event.
It's been happening for a while, and Willie's, I very seriously doubt there's more than twenty of the vehicles actually leaving the property. These things are old.
They're definitely vintage, and they're they're not going to be vehicles that have any type of speed, any type of.
It's it's more like a car show.
Car show, yeah.
Yeah.
And when they're, they do have motorized trails, but their trails are gonna be chicken corners, hurrah pass.
Yeah.
They're not.
And it's gonna be seventy-year-old vehicles out there, kind of puntering around, right?
They're probably gonna be trailer.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, you'd assume.
I mean, does anyone feel strongly that Jeep Jamboree should not be axed?
I I mean, I tend to, I just think we've got limited capacity and we've we've got a lot of motorized events in this time period that that are already established.
That's three weeks in a row of motorized events.
It's not, not a local promoter.
In, it's not a local promoter, so we're not taking money out of the locals. Other than, you know.
And they would still have the other week?
They'd have the week in October, maybe if we if we let them.
Maybe.
So far, we've been saying yes to all, you know, long established events.
Yeah.
Because people really do start planning vacations around.
I think a a fall and a spring is nice. I don't know if we need to double down on Jeep events in the spring.
I mean, that still leaves, even if we if we delete Willie's Rally, you know, it still leaves Utah Bronco Club, Raptors on the Rock, Jeep Jamboree, and Gon Moab all in May.
Is that, is that one every weekend, basically?
Yeah. Yep. Yep, every single weekend in May.
Yeah. Though, I mean, some of these are are not huge.
Right.
Yeah, especially Raptors on the Rocks, it's pretty, pretty small, so I think that is worth keeping that in mind. But I'm.
Yeah.
I mean, I support the, I, yes, I think whenever we have, already have a lot of events at the same time, at the same time of year, when someone has to make a really strong case that we need to add yet another event like that, and I don't see what that is in this case. And I I think for roughly similar events, I'm not sure we need, you know, yet another trail race, we've got bunches of them. So.
Yeah, it seems to me as far as like timing and how the how the spring is divvied up, it would make the most sense to take the Utah Bronco Club out of there, but they've been engaged in the county for a long time. How long? The Bronco Club, oh, that's the twelve-year mark.
Can I just throw into consideration, this is really gonna open up the OSTA calendar a lot. I mean, this is a county entity that we're talking about, so it's revenue coming in to the county.
Yeah, for me, it's important to. Yeah, I I mean, I I think it's important to fund OSTA and to also get revenue as a county, but I think it's important for us to listen to the biggest issue that people talk to us about all the time, which is the impact, the noise impact and the kind of like busy growth of Moab, and this is where we have a chance to to try to decide the direction that we want to go.
I'm I'm uh sensitive to Angie's concerns as well. Not that I think that it should be a revenue generator that we can get every dollar. That that shouldn't be our mandate is to make a bunch of money through OSTA, but um I I like this process and I kind of think that uh getting something in place this year and then kind of dealing, you know, I'm kind of more in limiting the growth than trying to rewind. And I know that that's not the same as where everyone else is, but uh for what it's worth, I'm I'm sensitive to to wiping the OSTA calendar clean. And I'm a little more comfortable with some of these longstanding ones continuing to to operate and then just having this in place as new applications come in, then we can look through it as that lens of.
Just three years.
But but that is more or less what we're doing. I mean, I I think the proposal on the table is all the events that have been operating in the past are getting approved, and then there's two new applications that you know, that were, so some people have advocated for saying no to, one was the Trail Fest. Yeah, there's one one running event and one one Jeep event. So I, that sounds consistent with what you were.
Well, it sounded like we were starting to get into Broncos and Raptors.
Oh, no, I don't think anyone's, I think that was just, that was the context. So so we're looking at probably eliminating one of the four kind of branded motorized events.
Yeah, the Jeep Jamboree and.
But it's not eliminating because it's a brand-new application, it's sort of freezing things that exist. Both for the running events and for.
And I could see the Jeep Jamboree just because.
It's their second event of the year.
It's their second event of the year.
I'm I'm okay with that one, I was just.
I'm okay with that, too.
Before we started piling.
I already feel bad for Trail Fest, they've been trying to get this event to work since twenty nineteen.
I'm kind of an, honestly, I'm a bit of an advocate for Trail Fest, I think that might be kind of cool. It's all, the other thing I'd point out about it is that every other event are are running a race, whereas Trail Fest is is just trail runs, and there there's actually a difference, non-competitive, right?
Yeah, it's it's gonna be expo clinics, um, it's a full.
Then just like group, group run.
But seven hundred, that's a huge number of people to send, yeah. I mean, if 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 this were a hundred person instead of seven fifty, I might say, okay, but.
Could we ask them?
They're gonna be camping at OSTA, too.
Although.
It'll be self-campagne.
What do you, how, honestly, how many people you think will be camping, like half of that, a quarter of that?
I I think they're going for everybody to be camping.
Okay, so it'd be like one big.
So it's more like a festival for them.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I I think the more I learn about this event, the less I like it. I mean, this, it sounds like really large. It's, you know, over multiple days. We've already got a lot of things like this, um, you know, I again, I I don't, I don't think, you know, it just feels like commercializing the back country.
Would you be interested in it? I know, and this is tough, because I I don't run anymore, but I used to be a huge trail runner. If it was a different time of the year, like if it was in February, and I realize that, but to me, running here in February, you can run here all year long, so I don't know, I I'm just wondering if they would be a little bit more willing if we moved it to a different time of the year where it benefits the community a little bit more, it benefits businesses a little bit more. Does that make sense? That they would be?
I mean, if it were the only running event of the year, sure, but we've already got lots of others. And and I think at some point we have to start saying no, I mean, other, you know, because you know, the the way crowding occurs, it's not in gigantic blocks, it occurs one little event at a time, one little increase at a time. Um, and I I think just the fact that we're, you know, maybe these are very nice people, maybe they've been trying to do this for a while, but that's, to me, that's not sufficient. I I think you just look at, you know, we've already got all these events that are established, we're inclined to say yes to those, given these things that are already on the calendar, do we need another event like this? To me, the answer is is no.
Could we put a condition of a smaller attendance? The event to make.
And these kind of events, the promoter need to hit obviously certain numbers to actually make it worth their while, right? I have no idea.
Do we know how? Do we know how big the the runs are?
There's a website out that looks like they're like half my, half marathons.
Right, I mean, like how many people? Presumably, everybody would run.
Yeah, so they're they're advertising day one as Pritchard Arch. So and then.
Arch, arch, is it seven hundred over the dead time period?
Seven hundred over the time period, I, that's total daily attendance, that's not all the registered riders.
So not everybody's gonna run every single race?
They're also advertising family activities and stuff.
I kind of like.
Most of the courses are on two tracks. One is on Porcupine, which in my mind, I was wondering about user conflict.
Hopefully, that's not a Saturday, which day is Porcupine? Yeah, that's not a good idea at all.
I don't know, man.
I mean, I I do think at some point we have to start saying no. I mean, I don't like, I I could, we should turn it around, you know, suppose we've you know, we had only the old events and we were deciding we need to seek out some new events because we want a few more for various reasons. Is this the kind of event we would encourage someone to apply for? I I don't think so, so.
With this process, if we had something where it was like, oh, we don't like the Saturday, we don't like the number of racers, would we kick that back to the applicant and kind of say, would you like to try again and adjust X, Y, and Z?
We would be, we would be comfortable with it if there were less people and you didn't do uh, what was it, Porcupine?
It's just Saturday, Porcupine Rim.
If I pick a different trail for Saturday. Run in my cell.
Well, I mean, regardless of of this particular one, just in the in the application process, if we find something that's a little like eh, well, it's just like approving the conditions, right?
And it can come back to us for final approval.
Yeah, for the same year.
Yeah, it can come back for final approval.
But it wouldn't come back to us till near.
It would come back as a final package.
I mean, they already have it advertised.
I don't want to do that.
I would.
I know, but what I'm saying is.
If you, if you impose the conditions, it's, you're basically saying, yes, we would almost certainly approve this if you.
Right.
Oh, okay. This is true.
I I, some, mentioning specific trails, I also think the Hunter Canyon Loop Trail is totally inappropriate for large groups, so.
I don't see the Hunter Canyon one, is that?
It's on their app, their application.
So is that?
It's been out on their website, which is.
Is that up Hunter Canyon or is it the room? Come down.
Right, so it turns into single track.
Uh, I I think that the size, without knowing the specifics of the number of runners, it seems like an event that size in the back country on single track is probably not what we're after in April.
Yeah. Do we have any conditions or do we just deny?
I think it's not like we don't have enough special events, you know, we're not, it's not our job to be nice to applicants, I mean, that's that's not what we're supposed to do here.
Yeah, this company, I mean, it seems like it's the same company, right? They have one in Kanab, they have one in Northern Utah. This is just one of their series.
Yeah, he has a series.
Right.
But this isn't a local family.
No, no, they're at a, they're at a St. George, Washington County.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
At least it's Utah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't so, would we next it kind of as is and they could take another shot, or does it say, don't even? I mean, because.
I I think we could say that, you know, we feel like we're already, you know, on the scale of a year, we're already saturated with running events. You know, if they wanted to do something up in the Book Cliffs or something with, you know, a lot fewer people, you know, then they could try applying again for next year or something, but um.
Yeah, I think that time of year, not many people disrupt. Again, I think I'd be more apt to, you know, if you look at something like February. But.
But then they couldn't camp out.
Yeah.
Well, I think the applicant is probably welcome to listen to this workshop to understand why we denied them and could still apply in fall or in the future.
Right.
I I also would note that moving forward, we would be doing this process a lot earlier for I believe this. Okay.
Yeah, this year, regularly.
Okay.
So it's, so it sounds, so I guess based on the conversation so far, I would propose that we approve all the ITAs, you know, for the spring with the exception of this, it's a Trail Mix, Trail
Trail Fest.
Trail Fest that we're just talking about and the expansion into the new spring Jeep Jamboree, which members of the press should be clear, this is not the usual Jeep Jamboree, which is in the fall, which has been going a long time, this is so, we're saying yes to almost everything, but not everything.
Is this a motion or are we voting?
We'll vote.
We have to make the motion now so that when we get to it in the agenda, we are the, we won't have to go through this whole process yet. Except for.
That's.
Now, this is really.
That seems clean. I still have a bit of a question mark, what do we do with the two that is just like denied in the story, or is it uh please try again for this year, or?
I I I think we're awash in special events, we don't need to go out of our way to.
But will the committee issue the findings or? They were like, you're, you know, thanks, but no thanks because?
Yeah, well, I mean, what they could ask Angie or Rachel, you know, why, and you know, they can listen to the tape, what we've been saying right now, or they can ask staff.
We have a letter that goes out.
Letter that goes out.
Okay. I mean, I'm kind of with Quinn. I don't want to say if you do X, Y, and Z, we would like it. Not that that's a granted thing, but it's kind of like if they start with a blank slate and just come back.
I mean, but I, I would say, I don't know if this is a sense of the full commission, but, you know, in these categories of both motorized events and running events, we've already got quite a few. So I think any new events, you know, there's got to be something special about them. You know, maybe they're very low impact because they're most being run out of Green, Green River or Fruta or something like that. Or, you know, there's just something kind of unique and great about them, but if it's just yet another event in those categories, to me, that's a tough thing to approve, so.
And that's why I like the idea of a cap on certain kinds of events, because it's a little bit more of an objective metric. So we're just like, this is our cap. And I think, Kevin, you kind of mentioned this in the past too of like, this is our number and we've got this many applicants to fit into that number. How do, how do we then, you know, whittle it down to our ideal number?
Yeah, so maybe for three months from now, when we do this again, we might want to come up with some of those quotas.
We still need to make a decision about how to treat the Red Cliffs, the very unclear application for the Red Cliffs concert series.
Well, I'm, personally, I, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, uh, saying yes to it if they're going to provide a shuttle. Are you good with that, Sarah?
Yeah.
Just the condition of shuttle.
I'm, I'm happy with that as well. The shuttle would be, the shuttle would be great.
I think it's unneeded.
Okay, sorry. I guess we already did decide that. Music is good.
I think we thought there might be more.
I had four things down. The only condition you wanted was just.
Well, if, if it's in the evening, I don't think.
We talked about blackout dates or something.
So there was, there was the traffic on the river roads which led into the shuttle, the condition of the blackout date, and then they had ten minutes as far as tickets.
I think in the end, the shuttle should pretty much cover.
Just the shuttle.
I, I think, I think so too. I think, I think the event should take place in the afternoon after any of the sporting events that occur out there.
Or, or we could just this year not, not put restrictions, but just monitor it to see if it is causing problems and.
Maybe recommend a shuttle.
Something that the locals really, because they really appreciate the free concerts. I mean, that's a big deal.
Well, and they've showcased local musicians this year as well in addition to bringing people in, so.
So.
And this will still have to go through the Special Event Advisory Committee, so we will still have the capacity here, like, you know, and the room to look at those dates. That might be weird. So maybe it could be approved also with giving that committee the ability to holistically look at the dates, um, along with any other conditions.
Maybe we can ask the committee if it looks like some of their dates are going to coincide with busy times and you could raise the flag and bring it back up.
Yeah.
Before approving that date.
It's almost five, four, and I wouldn't mind at least having a five-minute break. Do we, are we clear on the motion?
So, so I think the, the motion is approve everything on the list, two exceptions, and then there's some conditions on the.
Yeah.
Music event, and I think also, and Masa back, we also wanted them to avoid over utilizing that staging area, so.
So we need some kind of like appropriate ticket numbers, like even if that's just like a vague kind of thing for, for Red Cliffs.
I think monitor it this year and see.
Yeah, I think so too.
I, I, they don't even know.
They get some big headliner and they don't have some cap, you know, like if the stones show up or they.
The stones.
Might be kind of fun.
We're all going, man.
I need to observe what's going on.
All right, are we, are we good? I, I, I feel comfortable where we're at. Okay, cool. I'll, I'll adjourn the, um, special workshop and we'll reconvene at five minutes at four o'clock.
Sounds good.
Mark, Markham, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you, Mark. All right, I will open this regular meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District, October eighteenth. Present are County Commissioners Sarah Stock, Kevin Walker, Josie Kovach, Evan Clapper, Tricia Dean, Mary McGann, and myself, Chuck Cadler. We also have Clerk, Gabe Waitak, we have Commission Administrator Mallory Nassau, Associate Administrator, Quinn Hall, and we have Chief Markham on Zoom. Our first order of business is citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens who would like to be heard on issues pertaining to the Thompson Fire District? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next up, we have approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from the September twentieth meeting. Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to accept minutes as presented in the packet for the meeting on the twentieth of September. September, that's what's before October.
I have a motion. Second. All right, I have a motion for approval of minutes by Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion of the Thompson minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing with Commissioner Kovach absent. We are on to ratification of payment of bills. Ratification of total bills in the amount of two thousand twenty dollars and ninety-six cents. Total payroll, the amount of one thousand six hundred forty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. Total bills and payroll in the amount of three thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Trish. Oh, a little second. All right, motion to approve the bills by Commissioner Hadeen, second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on Thompson bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Kovach absent. We are moving on to our fire chief's report, and we have Chief Markham on Zoom. Mark.
Hello.
We can hear you, Mark.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'll start off with recent incidents. On September twenty-sixth, we had a semi truck and trailer go flying off the bridge on I seventy at mile marker two oh five, that's right at the west Cisco exit. Went down about seventy feet, landed on the railroad tracks there at about six o'clock in the morning. And that was quite the rescue. It took quite a few members of Moab Valley Fire Department, myself, Grand County EMS, and the Sheriff's Office, and also UHP to get the patient extricated from the truck and then back up to the waiting ambulance. So that took a couple hours actually to get for that whole thing to go down. We had three different trauma calls in early October, two in the Booklets far above Thompson but in Grand County, and then one at Crescent Junction. As far as equipment goes, I'll be getting our building backup generator serviced. It's due just in time for winter here, so have that ready to go to keep the heat going in case the power goes out in Thompson. And then also kind of a big item is our Jaws of Life, it's a crucial education tool and really needs to be replaced. It's over twenty years old, and so I'm trying to work that into the budget. They're not cheap, but I'm trying to find the best deal and really need to have that out there, so. And then lastly, I'll be attending the EMS conference and training in Provo on November ninth through twelfth to help keep up my EMS training. And that's it.
Awesome, Mark.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Hey, Mark, it's Trish. I heard Kurt talking about those rescues in the Booklets. Do you know what area they were in? And also, on top of that, do you feel like we're getting more calls out in that country?
Um, I know one was in Bogart Canyon.
Okay.
Both like past the Indian Reservation, and the other one was, I can't recall, but it was still past there. I was actually coming back from an airport conference when those went down, so I wasn't a part of those. But yeah, this is hunting season big time up there. Horse trailers are going nonstop up and down. So it's usually this time we'll have at least one, but there was actually three in the Booklets that day. The other one was above Westwater. But yeah, I definitely seeing more traffic up there. And it's very remote, and it's hard to get to. And a lot of times they have to use a helicopter to get up there, so it's interesting. And the weather's been good, so when the weather gets bad, it's gonna be even more interesting.
Right, right. Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you, Mark, and thanks for your continued good work out in Thompson.
Thank you.
It looks like we don't have any new or old business with Thompson. So I will adjourn the Thompson Special Service Fire District meeting. And I will open the regular Grand County Commission meeting, October eighteenth, four eleven, with all the previously named commissioners and staff present, as well as, I see Attorney Sloan has joined us on Zoom. So we will rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the regard for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, citizens to be heard. We'll go with any citizens in the room here who would care to come up and make a statement. And if you're here to make a statement, please come up to the table. Anyone like to be heard at this point? Looks like none in the room. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to, who's a citizen who would like to be heard? Raise your hand or unmute. All right, doesn't look like we have anyone on Zoom either. Send out one more call in the room, and we will have another citizen to be heard at six o'clock. Anyone care to come up and be heard? We will move on to department reports. And our first report is from the Building Department, and that is Bill Hulse. And before Bill, you get started, come on up. We just wanted to, we just wanted to thank you very much for your untiring work during all of our recent emergency events, the floods especially, and the fire before that. You've absolutely risen to the occasion and done a superb job during these tough events, and we very much appreciate it, and we have a little token of our appreciation for you here.
Thank you very much. So I am Bill Hulse, Building Administration, Floodplains Administrator. We've had a pretty busy year so far. Construction in the county is still going strong. We've issued two hundred and forty-three permits so far this year, total revenue of two hundred and fifty thousand, give or take. We are also finishing up the permits that we have started in San Juan County. A few years back, we had a local agreement, started with them. There weren't staffs that needed some help. We stepped in, they are fully staffed now, so they will be taking that back over. So they take a little bit of workload off of us, gives a little bit more time for floodplain stuff. Next week, we're having two contracted community education classes for electricians, and then we're gonna have a one-day, twelve-hour class for climbers in November. So these are the classes that they need to take to renew their licenses with the state. In the past, we've had to partner up with the USU Moab because the state law changed, we couldn't provide that education anymore, but a state agency or a university could. We figured USU was probably better than DA PC for contractors. So we went with them. This year, we're gonna expand a little bit. We're offering the class here live in Moab. We're also offering it live in Blanding and Price, and then we have an online webinar that people can do it from wherever they are in the country. On the floodplain side, we've been a little bit busy too. We've been working with Bill Jackson on a couple of floodplain graphs. To use my previous long Pat Creek, we actually had a pre-meeting yesterday for the NRCS brands. They're gonna be able to buy crossings of Pat Creek. So hopefully, we'll be getting started on construction around the beginning of November and wrapping up by the end of the year. We completed our first verification visit with the CRS, which is a program in the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. We were accepted as a community, which gives our property owners that live in the special hazard area a ten percent discount on their flood insurance, and those outside of it a five percent discount. Jenny, in Emergency Management, with the Army Corps of Engineers Silver Jackets, they're putting together a flood emergency action plan for us, so we hope to have that hopefully wrapped up by the end of the year. That's about it. I'm sure there's a whole bunch more, but.
Just kind of trends on building. Do you feel like things are kind of plateauing? I mean, it's far, you've been around for a while. I mean, how do you feel just in general?
You know, with COVID, we didn't see us slow down at all. Now, things are starting to level off a little bit, prices are coming down a little bit. I think that's actually spurring more construction. We have a couple of big projects still coming in that haven't issued yet this year. We'll get them issued by the end of the year. We try to, we try to keep our budgets with the building departments. We try to keep our budgets so that the services we provide to individuals with buildings are covered by their building permit fees. There is some extra left over, but we do a lot of outreach programs and work for the general public, so we don't have to cover our entire budget, but we're gonna be pretty close.
My question's similar to Trish's. You mentioned the number of building permits. I'm assuming you have statistics going back a few years for how many permits of various types?
It kind of hangs around that same, two hundred and fifty. Again, some of them are deceiving, you know, we got a State Creek building or a motel. Obviously, there's a whole lot of work involved that's still on the council's budget.
I guess I'd just be interested in emailing with you after the meeting just to, you know, get like the spreadsheet or whatever it is.
We can do it right then.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks.
Mary, do you have something? Yes, where are we on the cleanup? Are we complete with the cleanup at Pat Creek Estates?
They mobilized this morning, they started cleaning up and limbing those cottonwood trees. They plan on finishing up within two weeks. Brandon with the Fire Department and I plan on going out on the first and third to do inspections. We're gonna be looking at homes with wood stoves in them, because manufacturing homes with wood stoves is pretty dangerous, and we'll be looking at general cleanup, yards, outbuildings, things like that. Work with Josh Green on neighborhood cleanup, to clean some of that stuff up, and the owners have some pretty big ideas on wanting to achieve the affordability. Expand on it and maybe look into the long-term camp park.
Long-term camp park, I mean, as far as the long-term rental?
Yeah.
Yeah, they've got four acres on the backside that's been vacant for years. They've had overflow camping on there, there's been a bunch of issues. Now with the planning department working on the new dwelling overlay, correct? They're reaching out to planning and zoning and talking with them about possibly doing something like that on that four acres. So we'll keep it, it's manufactured home park, short-term rental camp park, and then be a long-term rental camp park. Yeah, so they're working with planning and zoning, I know that's not.
And she, and the lady that owned it that came and thanked us, she lives out of town, correct?
Yes, yeah, she's in Connecticut, her partner is here, I met with him this morning.
I know that was really tough, and thank you for all the work you did. That was a hard one.
Yeah. It's tough going out and talking to those people that just lost everything. There's still rules that need to be followed when we're recovering and putting stuff back together, we still have.
And I know they haven't always, you haven't always dealt with really polite people and spin. You don't get paid enough for that.
I'm the building inspector, so I'm quite used to that.
All right, anyone else have anything for Bill, Evan?
Yeah, I know you've been dealing with a lot more pressing stuff and to a degree, much more important, but I was just, while you were here, I was curious if off the top of your head, you knew how many of the approved hotel permits that haven't broken ground are still coming down the pipe?
In the county, there's just the one, it's the Country and Streets, and they've been at it for a while. I think they initially submitted in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And it's gone through a bunch of renovations with site plan, and the building plan's been approved since twenty nineteen. We've actually had to go through because we've had a code update and re-review of those plans to make sure they're still made. Yep, I didn't break the record.
Only because we have so many questions for you, Bill. Thank you very much, yeah.
That's why we like you.
All right, next up, we have another department report, Economic Development with August Granite, and I think I saw August on Zoom, there he is.
Oh, are you in Arches?
You know, live from the scene, doing my job, talking to visitors, taking a break from inter.
There's a lot of snow on the mountain, I didn't see that much snow.
That's just, that's just my backcountry ski brain wishfully thinking. And hopefully that Evan doesn't have to, you know, be involved in getting me out of there next time, but. Um, we could talk about that another time. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Can you see my screen?
We can.
All right, um, I tried to make this quick, and I ended up with sixty slides. So, you know, I'm gonna try to go as quick as I can, but as y'all know, there's a lot going on in my world, and I'm gonna try to touch on as much as what we've done in the last year or so. And feel free to cut me off, or tell me to go faster, et cetera. So I'm gonna jump right into it. Um, one thing I'm not gonna touch on in this presentation is all of the special event work that Rachel has done in our office. You just spent a lovely two hours with her and Angie going diving deep. I think you all know how much work has gone into reforming that process. So just know that even though it's not in this presentation, Rachel is doing a great job and is an essential part of the office. Okay, so what goes on in this building that no one knows what it is except for those who knows what it is? First of all, just a quick plug, we're doing a lot of training, professional development. I did a management leadership academy this year to try to turn myself into a leader and manager. All of us, including myself, did a Science Moab Science Certification Training in Soil, Crust, Geology, and Ecology. Melissa got an MBA, and BGA got certified as a commissioner, Film Commissioner under the Association of Film Commissioners International. But what do we do? What goes on in that building? What goes on in my brain? Typically, it's kind of an insane jumble of all of the above. I'm gonna try to tease out a clearer narrative than this. So first, we have some visitor economy programs. So that includes, we're gonna start with visitor education. So the biggest one this year was the Arches Time to Entry Visitor Education Campaign. We have a newly released BioCrust video that I'll play a little bit of. We launched a human waste management website in partnership with the Solid Waste Service, Special Service District, and GCAT, and as well as some noise-related educational materials. So for the Time to Entry Campaign, we were, we ended up really being an essential part of some collaboration between the National Park Service, the Utah Office of Tourism, the Utah's Public Lands Policy Coordinating Office, the Utah Tourism Industry Association, USU, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Canadian Natural History Association, all with the joint mission of, you know, how do we mitigate visitor confusion and misperception issues around this new change and ensure that visitors have a seamless trip when they're here and that they book trips regardless of the change? The Information Center hosted NPS Rangers to facilitate use of rec.gov reservations. UDOT, who didn't make it on the previous slide, provided roadside variable messaging signs. And our department distributed just under ten thousand RAC cards and a little over five thousand outdoor adventure guides to about a hundred and five businesses to ensure that any place that a visitor had a question, our front desk warriors out there were able to provide the relevant information. We also designed and placed ads in traditional media, newspapers, magazines, et cetera. We updated the downtown locator boards to make sure that that information was available for those just walking down Main Street. We designed a wall-sized poster for Canyonlands Regional Airport and answered thousands of visitor emails and phone calls. Basically, we tried to do an all-out front to make sure that any person who'd looked up any information or visited the town whatsoever would know about the program. Here's just an example, here's Robert doing good things. He designed this ad, ended up in one of the traditional media outlets. And Melissa and Robert were instrumental distributing those RAC cards and outdoor adventure guides throughout the community. They went out several times a week and made really good connections. That was a really good part of this whole experience. So the biggest piece of this campaign was a two hundred thousand dollar digital paid media campaign. So we targeted TripAdvisor, YouTube, social media, Instagram, Facebook, et cetera, and paid search, so, you know, Google AdWords. In order to make, to target those who are interested in visiting Moab and ensure that they got the information that they needed about timed entry so that they didn't have the wrong information. That campaign delivered twelve million impressions across all platforms, two hundred thousand page visits to discovermoab.com, a hundred and fifty thousand unique visitors, with an average visit time of four minutes, which is very much above industry standard. On TripAdvisor, those that were exposed to the ads that we put out there about, hey, there's a timed entry campaign, please go get your reservation, they checked out thirty percent more points of interest in the Moab area compared to non-ad-exposed users. They checked out sixty percent more pages of Moab information than non-ad-exposed users. Same for accommodation, attraction, and restaurant pages, and they booked sixty percent more than non-ad-exposed users on TripAdvisor. So, so my takeaway there, and this is what love agrees with, that if exposed to accurate information, visitors planned accordingly and booked a trip to Moab despite a potential friction point with this new timed entry system. However, if you look at the numbers and you compare the data we have for the timed entry system from twenty-one to twenty-two, albeit twenty-one being a bit of a sugar high year, we just don't have good twenty nineteen data for this reference point. Total spend in the Moab area was down five percent for those that time period. Gas up eighteen percent, I don't think that's a surprise to anybody. Grocery spend was down twelve, restaurant spend was down sixteen, lodging spend was down twenty-five. We're looking forward to hearing what the NPS has with their visitor direct intercept information about quality of experience, what they're seeing now that the pilot is over, what's happening in October, they're turning people away on a daily basis.
And August, so those numbers from the Visa or MasterCard?
Just Visa. So that represents about sixty percent of the market.
Okay.
So it's down from twenty twenty-one, but we don't have information on twenty nineteen, is that what you said?
That's correct. We're looking for, we're trying to, we're trying to work with Visa to get that data, but we don't have it.
You just got it?
We literally just got it in August.
Like, you just got the email right now?
And yesterday.
All right, well, Ben will send you an update on these numbers at a later date.
Okay, that, thank you, Ben, I'd like to see that.
Um, you know, sorry, we can't turn this around in twenty-four hours, apologize. Um, let's take a look at this. I'm gonna see if I can share, I should be able to. Give me one second. I should be able to share my audio here. It might not let me. Well, I'll just show you a little bit of the visual. Um, we worked with Mark Finley, who we've done a lot of video production work with, who he partnered with Science Moab and other dry land ecologists to put together this really quite amazing video that highlights BioCrust and best practices, and he's got a new macro lens that gets really high-quality up-close content, as you can see here. So this is fully scientifically accurate, and, you know, it kind of the quality, to me, feels like a Discovery Channel piece. So this is published, this is live on our website. We haven't necessarily built out a distribution strategy on this piece, but we think that this is gonna be a really important part of our, you know, visitor education campaigns of the future. We're imagining a future web platform that, you know, we drive our visitors to using paid media to kind of go through the Moab steward or whatever you call it, education campaign, much like the backcountry skiing avalanche education campaign, kind of a like, you gotta do this before you recreate in Moab. And then shoot some really good emotionally engaging content to get people to buy in and see that there is a need for an ethic when you're visiting the area, and then lower in the funnel, these kinds of detailed videos. We're also gonna continue to work with GCAT to do that kind of content with our local businesses and residents, probably first before we go after visitors. But please check this out when you got some time, it's really rad. Uh, okay, let's pause here. Another piece of visitor education that we did.
That on the Discover Moab website, or where do we find that? Yeah.
I believe it is on the Discover Moab website, on the main page, there's a what's new section on the left. If you click that up, there should be the new BioCrust video linked there. It's also on the Discover Moab YouTube page. It's also on the Discover MOAB YouTube page. Um, one of the things that was really exciting this year, you know, there's been a lot of talk about wag bags as the kind of de rigueur, um, way to, to manage human waste in the backcountry in this area. Um, it was all over the paper is what happens when that meets, um, municipal waste disposal systems. Um, and so in an effort to ensure that safety workers are being taken care of and we're able to protect the backcountry as well, we partnered with, um, the Canyonland Solid Waste Special Service District, um, to put together a handful of, um, they, they put together the system. I should be totally clear about that. We just put together a page on our website and worked with GCAT to try to implement some, uh, some news, press releases, what's that, whatnot. But if you go to discover, uh, discovermoab.com slash poop, you will find this page that will link you, uh, to where you can drop it off. So you can drop it off right now to Lions Park, um, the wastewater treatment facility, the health department and the, uh, Canyonland Solid Waste Facility. I found this useful recently because I forgot where they were and checked it out myself. So it worked. They're still there.
August, do you have a sense of how much those have been used?
Well, I would have a sense of when I, oh, when I deposited one into the health department's bin, uh, the other day, it was about half full and that was on a Sunday.
Why are you dragging, dragging around a wag bag, August? I don't want, nevermind.
Listen, that was, that was, um, that was a pretty prompt. That was pretty prompt. I'll, I'll say that. Um, okay, there, there's been much conversation about updating the billboards, um, to kind of have this, uh, you know, please respect our neighborhoods when you're visiting the community, your adventure starts in them, um, kind of targeting, uh, motorized vehicle traffic, trying to get to trailheads through neighborhoods. Um, we're working with an artist, um, to kind of make some modifications based off of Matty's sketch that we presented months ago. Um, and, uh, once we have some kind of sketches, we'll have a meeting to get some input on them. Um, one of the item agendas today is renewing our contract, not for this billboard, but the billboard south of town. Um, just a heads up that we are actively trying to update those, what's on those billboards at the moment. Any questions on visitor education before I move to visitor services? Okay, I'm gonna keep rolling. So visitor services captures a lot of the work that we do, um, to answer questions, to provide information, to ensure that folks have the best experience possible and get the best information possible. So we produce travel planners, we ship them all around the world. Um, we make outdoor visitor guides for, um, you know, once you're in town, it has all of the trails that are basically not in the national parks. So it's kind of a dispersal effort as well. Um, and that's why we gave it out to folks during timed entry because it had non-park, um, information, recreation information. We have a leads program that distributes, that businesses can subscribe to and basically purchase, um, the, the visitor information for those who have signed up for the channel, travel planners and have opted in to, uh, basically receiving marketing information. Um, it's a very cost effective way for our local businesses to take advantage of our marketing efforts and the leads that they produce. It's low cost, it's not free, and that prevents too many, like, unlimited people using it. And, and then ultimately visitors getting like spammed in their inbox. Obviously, Discover MOAB website, we continue to maintain and operate, um, and update. Um, and then billboards besides those ones in town, also along the highway, um, on one ninety one and seventy, as well as answering questions on the phone, mail and chat. A couple of highlights, um, showing off our lovely staff, Robert and Melissa. Um, we just updated and printed seventy five thousand copies of the MOAB Outdoor Adventure Guide, which will last us through next year. We distributed twelve thousand travel planners to residents in all fifty US states, um, with California and Texas being the leading requesting, um, area, as well as Canada, UK, Germany, France, Italy, Australia, Belgium, Switzerland and Denmark. Um, the travel planner basically says what is going on in MOAB and what you can do while you're here. It's an inspiration kind of piece. Um, as I mentioned before, that leads program, um, is subscribed to by twenty businesses. And continues to grow, answered thousands of, of phone calls. We answer the phone through the MOAB Information Center. Um, and as well as direct chat messages and emails from our website. Continue to work on discovermoab.com, um, which has received up to three million visitors in a year. Um, we're down from that, um, that's a twenty nineteen high. Um, I mentioned the, the online content. One, one thing significant that happened this year was, um, damage that happened to the I-70 billboard, which Robert led on the repair and improvement of. Um, it looked like this at one point, um, some big windstorms of spring. You know, you saw all the way back to some ancient advertising, um, on that billboard here. So fix that. I don't have an after photo, but I'm sure you've seen on the highway. Um, visitor attraction is the next piece. Um, I, I kind of want to use this term instead of marketing because there's so many different ways that you can attract visitors, especially the ones that, um, uh, we feel are, are quality visitors to the community. So I'm gonna mention the Drive Market campaign and the Fly Market campaign that we've been working on a lot this fall. Um, as well as just a quick overview of the creative for anybody who hasn't seen it yet. Some travel trade work that Melissa has done, as well as international market development and some fan tours. So the Drive Market campaign is officially in market. As you can see over here, October seventeenth is the launch date. That was yesterday. Um, so, you know, we've gone through a process, um, that we feel has been fairly transparent with the commission and our boards, um, to ensure that the creative really fits the new direction that we want it to go towards, even though we haven't gone through a new branding process or a, or a whole, uh, you know, new process. Um, let's see if this will load. Uh, I'm just gonna skim through this for those who haven't seen it. Pardon my tabs. Can everybody see, um, the presentation here? Yep. Okay, so this is from Love Communications. Um, I'm just gonna quickly scan to some of the highlights here. The objectives here really were to increase, increase visitation to MOAB among responsible and conscientious travelers, inspire a sense of curiosity among visitors and desire to learn more about MOAB's ecology, history and culture, and to encourage off-season travel, which benefits local stakeholders and also improves the traveler experience. Um, so I'm gonna, I guess, I guess this is an important part too. Really should include imagery and language that evokes love and admiration for the land and a nod to MOAB's natural, historical and cultural resources and portrayal of the landscape as a national treasure rather than a playground. So if we look, there's kind of three main sub pieces here. So there's the nature's masterpiece, um, copy reading. You know, MOAB for our famous landmarks and national parks, which you might not know is how much is still waiting to be discovered if you're willing to broaden your horizons. On your next trip, make time to seek out destinations, experiences beyond your usual go-tos. You might have found a new place, an entirely new perspective. Learn how to visit responsibly at discovermoab.com. Same idea. Then this desert treasures piece that kind of is a, kind of a different take, not this outdoor adventure piece, but more of what are our cultural and historical resources? This is, uh, the grotto from the MOAB Music Fest. If you think MOAB is a place to recuperate between adrenaline rushes, think again. With the variety of museums, galleries and theaters, plus arts and music festivals happening almost year round, we've never, we're never short on inspiration. From modern art and cuisine to ancient history and culture, you'll be amazing, you'll be amazed at what's waiting to be discovered. Different treatments. And then lastly was this place for reflection. Um, uh, so, you know, this is focused on, we've, we talked a lot about things like ephemeral, we call it ephemeral pothole ecology and BioCrust and these other things that are, you know, uh, kind of leading with a, like an invitation of curiosity. If you come with curiosity, then you're gonna learn more about your experience here and you're probably gonna be more respectful along the way. Um, even in the most unassuming little desert pothole is home to a whole host of creatures, each is unique and beautiful as the landscape that surrounds them. Next time you're in MOAB, take a moment to pause your adventures and ponder the intricacies of the ecosystem that so many people miss. There's always more to discover if you look a little closer. Learn how to visit responsibly at discovermoab.com. Um, same treatments on billboards. I like these ones, this, they've got the little, um, fairy shrimp here, um, kind of a surprise, not something that we're known for by the average person, but kind of asking a different kind of curiosity, some indigenous cultural resources here down on Potash Road. Um, the social media is really where some of the, the more explicit, um, kind of responsible recreation asks come in. Um, really like this piece, even the most unassuming desert potholes are home to creatures as unique as our landscape, with deserts in the details. Is it responsibly? Um, to most people, it just looks like dirt. To the desert, it's a critical part of the ecosystem. Don't bust the crust. Um, so we've asked them to expand this type of social media posts that are more kind of call to action oriented about a specific piece. You know, and then this will link to the new video that we've created. Same idea here, desert BioCrust can take hundreds of years to recover from even a single footprint or tire tracks, see on the trail. Um, I'm not gonna spend too much time on this. This is what it looks like on the web. TripAdvisor, and then they did a video piece. Um, okay, that's, that's that. Um, let's see, any questions on the creative or the marketing that we're launching right now for the drive campaign at the moment? I think we've talked about this a lot so far this fall.
Yeah, thanks, August. It looks good. And that's a, uh, very thorough presentation.
Okay, I'm gonna keep crushing and try to not take too much time here. We've got the fly campaign, which is also approved. Um, it's gonna start this fall and run through the spring. So from the budget perspective.
So August, how, how much do you predict? How much longer do you think you have? Like out of the sixty slides, how many have you done?
Good question. Let's see, we're at thirty six.
Twenty, it's been twenty minutes so far.
Okay, do you want me to go like lightning fast?
We don't have to do every slide or there's maybe you can show us important ones.
Okay, I'll go really fast. You ready? Melissa did a lot of travel trade shows. You can cut me off.
Um, maybe, yeah, just skip to the highlights maybe and you could, you could always email us the presentation. We can, we can check that out. That'd be great.
Okay, I'm gonna go really fast. Melissa visited a lot of travel shows, she went to seven, um, national and five international trade shows in twenty twenty two. Uh, we went up to Tourism Day on the Hill, doing a lot of relationship building with the state. Um, basically Melissa's doing a good job. I'm not gonna get though too much. We did a campaign internationally in a co-op with a bunch of other national park DMOs, Germany. Um, in terms of film, BGA's doing a great job with the Kostner movie and several other things in the area, um, to help get that real film incentive to, to go forward. Um, doing community events, free movie in the, in the, in, in the parks. Um, she got her, uh, Certified Film Commissioner status and did the Wild, Weird, Wacky Westerns movie. Um, fun little piece of here, we got, we got Kostner. Um, business services, Ben's done an amazing job. You know what he's done. I'll skip through this. The Canyonlands Business Summit, um, sorry, Ben, we got thirty businesses, public agencies and nonprofits across both counties and a hundred and fifty attendees. Um, it was really great. We're gonna do it again in some form in February. Um, we had twenty or so sponsors, raising a little under ten grand. Uh, this is what people wanted. Lots of good information. Um, I'm gonna skip ahead of this because I think grants is more interesting, but basically we have some good information. We're gonna keep the business summit rolling in the future and it'll be a good opportunity to share what we're doing as an office. It was a good time. Um, tourism grant, we awarded thirty grand, um, out of fifty grand, eight applicants, seven awardees. Uh, these were the awardees. The Start Business Grant, about a million dollars in, uh, funding forty nine applicants, a little under three million requests. Um, let's see here, awardee projects, fourteen proposed construction and infrastructure modifications, six proposed workforce housing, proposed a new hire, twenty eight proposed local collaboration. Great numbers from Ben. Um, we will be, um, awarding, well, the, the county commission will be considering awarding the first round of those awards, um, today. In terms of the flood relief grants, we have processed.
We, uh, can't hear you, August. Oh, lost you.
How about now? Can you hear me now? How about now?
Can hear you at home, August, but not there, I guess.
Oh, you, you think they froze?
Yeah, I think there's something going on in the commission room.
Okay, maybe I'll text Ben. Well, I'm certainly not as fast as Bill was, but.
I'm sure you're getting the same message as August, but I'm being told internet's totally down in the chambers.
I can see him now.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me? I can hear you now.
We can hear you, August.
Can you see my screen still?
Yes, we can still see, see your screen.
All right, I'm just gonna keep cranking then. Should I continue?
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you would, and yeah, just, uh, maybe wrap it up.
Yep. So just last couple of programs here. Um, the flood relief grant program, we received twenty nine applications for requests totaling about a little under $400,000 for total claims damages over $2 million. Um, awarded twenty four for a total of $213,331, five max awards for twenty grand. These are the folks that were awarded. Um, and then the special event grant was awarded this year, um, to the MOAB Folk Festival for last and this year, the Free Concert Series this year, the Endurance Canyon Ride and the Pow Wow. And I think that's it.
All right, awesome. Thanks, August. Sorry about the interruption. Any quick questions for August?
Would you email us the presentation?
Sure, certainly.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, thanks for your patience, y'all. It's hard to fit everything into fifteen minutes.
You're, you're, you're doing a ton of good work, man. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
See you in a minute.
We will move on to our presentations and our first presentation will be our auto presentation with John Hatterley from Larson and Co. Is John, okay, do you know, oh, you're John, yes. Is John, okay, do you know, oh, you're John, yes. Please. Thanks, John.
Yeah, let's, I, I. No.
We've got the coffee too.
Okay.
It just came out, it just came up on email?
So I'll start while they're pulling that up. I'll start with the audit report. So that's the, the big copy. You can see how big it is on your computer screen. Or if you'd like to stand, there's the, uh. I can sit, it's all right. I've just been sitting all day, so. So you'll, you'll notice that the audit reports changed from last year. It's not because you change auditors, like the audit report actually changed nationwide. Now, so they, they've kind of restructured things. They've added some things that were required to communicate as part of the audit report. Just, I'll just cover those real quick. The first section is now the opinion. The opinion used to fall later on in the report, but everybody wanted to know the, to know the opinion first. The opinion on the financial statements this year is a, is an unmodified or unqualified opinion. That's a clean opinion in my world. Last year, you had a qualified opinion. And that was due to some of the component units. Because they weren't tested. But I had my team actually test some of their balances at those component units so that we could get comfortable with those balances. So then we, we didn't have to qualify your opinion. So we did a few extra procedures in order to get rid of your qualified opinion. So clean opinion, our basis for opinions. So we follow certain standards. And those are the general, generally accepted auditing standards as well as GAAP, which is accounting principles. And government auditing standards. So those are kind of the, the guidelines that we have to follow. There's a lot of things that we do behind the scenes besides just looking at your financial statements. A lot of documents that we have to fill out as part of the audit. You can see there that we didn't audit. The Canyonlands, Grand County Recreation, Solidway Special Service District and the EMS. Those were actually audited by other auditors. And we just get their audit report and, and our opinion kind of relies on their opinion as far as those entities go. But the other ones that, that typically don't receive an audit. That is the reason why you got a qualified opinion last year are the ones that we actually did procedures on. And we just, so we just did that as part of the financial statement audit for the county. Your responsibility for the financial statements. Really is to know and understand accounting principles, know how to put together a set of financial statements, know how, know how to record the transactions in the books. Our job is to audit those transactions. One of the new things that we're required to communicate to you this year is if, while putting together your financial statements or reviewing transactions during the year, if issues come up where there's a question about your ability to continue as a going concern within the next year. You're required to do an analysis on what's the issue? Is it an overcomeable issue? How are we going to overcome it and then form a game plan? For example, if something happened, everybody loses their jobs, nobody wants to pay their property tax, that's a huge source of revenue for the county. If you don't have that, can you overcome that and continue to operate as a county paying all the expenditures that you're required to pay? Or do you have to come out, go out and get some other, you know, funding to be able to cover that? So that's the analysis that you have to do internally. Our responsibility, like I said, is we're required to audit your financial statements. We look for material misstatements within the financial statements and all of our audits are risk based, so we identify risks. That are contained in the financial statements and we'll talk a, a little bit about those. We also look at your internal control. On the next page, this is a, is also a new section of the audit report, so you can see the bullet points there. This is, these are, have always been part of our engagements, but now we're required to report on them in the audit report. The first is we just have to exercise professional judgment and, and professional skepticism. We're not coming in accusing you of doing anything wrong. My opinion is most people in the world want to do what's right and they try to do what's right and they try to do a good job. But we have to trust but verify. So you know, our audit is not to come in accusatory. We want to help you guys get better. We want to help you, you know, do things the right way. But professional skepticism is, you know, we, we, we do have to question things and when things come up. You know, and your staff are awesome. Any questions that, that my team asked, we had responses immediately. If there were questions, you know, they went and looked, looked up the information and we were able to get the information. So I really appreciate that. Like I said, we have to identify the risk of material misstatement. We have to look at your internal control. We do not give an opinion on your internal control, but, but we do look at it, your controls to make sure, A, that they actually exist and B, that they're functioning. If, if you don't have any operating controls, then your audit risk will go significantly higher and we have to change the way we test things based on you not having any controls. We have to evaluate the appropriateness of how you use principles and how you understand them. And then the last ballpoint is, kind of follows along with your assessment of your ability to continue as a going concern. If there's things that we identify as part of our test work that kind of trigger those thoughts, then we also have to do an analysis on your ability to continue as a going concern. And just for public record, there weren't any signs of, of you guys not, not being able to continue to operate as a county. I know I, I was talking about this to somebody and they freaked out and thought that I was telling them that they weren't going to be able to continue within the next twelve months, but this is more just information that we have to look at in, during our engagement. All right, required supplementary information. Just remember that there are parts of the financial statements that don't fall under our opinion. And that is the management's discussion analysis that immediately follows the audit reports on the next page. And then after the notes to the financial statements that are, is a section called required supplementary information that has budget schedules in it. It has the URS information, the pension information, the schedules that are required to be there. So they're not a part of the basic financial statements, however, they're required to accompany the financial statements to give more readability and more understandability to the financial statements. So I always tell councils and commissions and, and, and other boards that if you want to study the financial statements, the management's discussion analysis is the first place to start because it's kind of the reader's digest version of what's in the financial statement. So it's kind of a thirty thousand foot view of what's in the financial statements. There's a lot of comparative data to the prior year. So you can see where you're at year over year versus getting into the weeds of the numbers. And sometimes you get lost thinking, oh my gosh, I don't understand these governmental statements. They don't make any sense to me. So the management's discussion analysis is a good place to start. Supplementary information, so that would be any non-major funds that you've, you've requested that we add to the financial statements. The schedule of expenditures of federal wards, so that is your single audit. That's considered supplementary information. So supplementary information is information that is either by your choice or somebody else says you have to include this information. But it does fall underneath our opinion. So those, those sections are audited and they, they also received an unqualified or unmodified opinion. If you want to flip the back. Page, I don't know what PDF page it's page seventy nine. Probably ten pages from the end. Don't go on the, on your page side and then scroll down your pages. Can you see the, can you see, read that, that report right there? Okay, so these are the, the other audit reports that were required to issue that this one talks, is a report that were issued that says that we did your audit according to government auditing standards. This one just, this report really just talks about us looking at your internal controls. Not that we give an opinion on it, like I said, but we have to identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We didn't find any that we would report as part of this letter. All right, two pages, go two pages down. This is the report that we're required to issue for the state auditor. And you can see the indented area right there in the middle of the page. Those were the areas that we were required to look at. There's significantly more than last year and that's because this is the first year that we've done your audit, so it's the, your, your first cycle. So anything cash management, open and public meetings, public treasures, Utah retirement systems, impact fees, tax levy recognition, enterprise fund transfers. So all those are, are third year procedures, so you only have to be tested on those every three years. But since this was the first year that we performed the audit. Whether or not you did it last year or two years ago, we were required to do it again. We do give an opinion on your compliance and, and, and our opinion is, is also an unmodified or unqualified opinion on your compliance. Meaning that we didn't find any material non-compliance that during our test work. And, and as you'll see, as we discuss the management letters, that there weren't any state compliance findings this year. All right, next page, so two pages down. So the next report is the report that we issue for your single audit. And this just says that we've done our test work in accordance with the uniform guidance. And we give an opinion on each of your major federal programs. So we don't look at every federal program that you get. Based on your schedule of expenditures, we have to determine which ones are major programs and those are the ones that we give an opinion on. So we give an opinion on your internal control and as well as your compliance. And both of those opinions are unmodified and unqualified. If there are any issues that come up. And we are required to report them to the federal government. Everything was submitted to the federal government by the deadline. That was my big concern was getting it to the federal audit clearinghouse by September thirtieth, but we did make it. So that's good. Thanks to Gabe for kind of being there for the end. Trying to throw everything together and make sure that we get the deadline. Just a couple of things that I'm, I need to go over with the single audit. On page eighty seven, so if you go down twenty three pages. The summary of auditor results. So as far as what gets reported, were reported to the federal government, we have to report what your opinion was on the financial statements. So an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. There were not any material weaknesses identified, not any significant deficiencies and no non-compliance that were material to the financial statements. Your federal ward program. We also have to identify our opinions. We did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as it relates to the federal programs. And, and any major federal, federal program that we tested received an unmodified opinion. That you can see that we tested the ARPA money this year, so that was the major program. And Moa or Grand County qualifies as a low risk auditee. That really doesn't mean anything to you guys other than it's more information for us. Everybody freaks out about not being low risk or not being considered low risk. That just means that you haven't had any findings in the last prior two years and that you've had single audits that they've been filed on time. Or that there's, there's not any grants that a granting agency says this is high risk and you have to test it as high risk. So it's really kind of out of your control, whether or not you're determined to be low risk or high, or high risk. And all it means is if, if you're not considered low risk, they don't call it high risk. They say you're not low risk, but that means that I have to test more. So that's, that's the difference. It really doesn't mean anything to you guys other than I have to have more percent coverage. All right. Now the management letter. I'll be quick on this one. These are things that we're required to go over with you as a commission. Or council, sorry. Oh, commission? Sorry. I talked to so many people and everybody's changing. Everybody's like switching between council and seven member, five member. All right. Okay, so the plan, scope and timing, the audit, we, we outlined that in the engagement letter, the sign at the beginning of the engagement. The significant risks, risks that were identified. So I told you that we're going to talk about risks and these are things that were required to communicate with you as well now. So the risks that we identified were improper revenue recognition, cash disbursements and then potential management bias estimates and the ability of management to override controls. So a lot of people have kind of been freaking out about this, thinking, oh my gosh, we have these problems, but I need to address these as, these are significant risks that were required to, in every engagement. So if we don't identify revenue recognition as a significant risk, then we have to document what in your entity would make it not a significant risk. And it doesn't matter if you're a government, a nonprofit, public company. Everybody has that as a significant risk. Cash disbursements, because you are a government entity. And you are utilizing public funds, there is a risk of misspending those funds. Therefore, cash disbursements becomes a, a significant risk. And then management's bias, estimates and the ability to override controls, those are risks and this kind of boils down to internal controls. So, so Gabe's ability to create a journal entry is an override of a control. As, as you guys know, as, as I've worked with Cody Dieter on some of the internal control stuff and, and kind of helping it, you know, with the county. We talk a lot about internal controls and your financial records should be done on a transaction basis. So journal entries are a way to either correct something that's happened or management's ability to override that control. So you have to have that ability to create a journal entry. However, inherently you can commit fraud and conceal fraud by having that ability to override that control. So you can see how it's kind of a double edged sword. So that's why it's, it's, it's a significant risk. What this means to you guys is these are the risks that we had to identify in our audit and then we have to plan our procedures and our tests around these areas to make sure that we reduce the risk to a reasonable level to be comfortable with the balances. So nothing, you know, major that, that you need to change as a county, those risks will probably always be there. But we, we plan tests around that. And then if we think, if we find areas of concern, we'll usually talk to Gabe or whoever and you know, if it's significant enough, then we'll issue a finding. All right. So management, we talked about the, has the responsibility to use appropriate accounting policies. There weren't any new accounting pronouncements that were implemented this year. And, and nothing, nothing changed from the prior year. Significant accounting estimates. Like I said, this was identified as a significant risk, but you have to know that there's always estimates in financial statements. The, the, the reason why that's a significant issue is I always give the example of a capital asset. So if you go out and you buy a new fire engine, it's five hundred thousand dollars. And you pay for, pay cash for it on your financial statements, if you show that as, as an expense, it's going to be a five hundred thousand dollar hit to your, to your bottom line. But if you say, well, we think it's going to last for fifty years. Then we're going to depreciate that over fifty years, then it's only a thousand dollars that hit your bottom line. That's a huge difference in net income. And if, and so what we do is we try to identify any estimates in the financial statements. URS pension, you know, your net pension liability, that's an estimate and it's going to change every year. That one's out of your control. But we look at those to make sure that they're consistent over time and that they're reasonable. You know, it's not reasonable to expense an asset that's going to last twenty years, all in one year versus, well, we think it's going to last a hundred years. That's, that's also not reasonable. So we have to say, okay, here's what, how, how long you should depreciate a fire truck. The reason being is it's really hard for you to plan for the future by looking at financial data. It's historical when you have these big swings in financial data because of estimates. Because they can't change. And if you change your methodology, then it changes at the bottom line and then you go back and you can't get consistent data to plan for the future. And so that's one of the reasons why we, we talk a lot about it and we try to identify it. And make sure that they're reasonable and that they're consistent over time. There weren't any uncorrected misstatements. There weren't any significant difficulties during the audit. Like I said, we, we got all the information that we needed. I will, this is probably a good time to talk about it. One of the reasons why the audit was late was because of the component units. We audit quite a few counties and this is a problem in every county. I, I'm giving you guys the charge or talking to you. I've already talked to Gabe. I've talked to Quinn. If you can push the component units to get their audits done before the June deadline. I'm working on my end, working through the state auditor to actually try and change the law so they have to be done by the end of May. That gives them, you know, a thirty day grace period to be able to get up to you guys, to be able to get your financial statements in on time. But if you can push on your end to have them close their books right after the end of the year, get with their auditors. It typically has been a problem in the past where I would say the blame falls on us, the CBAs, because a lot of the CPA firms in the state do tax season and then they do government audits in the summertime, so they wait until after April fifteenth. And then they go on vacation and so then it's May or June when they started in the audits. Well, there's no way you could finish an audit that fast. And then they go on vacation. And so then it's May or June when they start doing the audits. Well, there's no way you could finish an audit that fast. And I'm working with a couple of other CPA firms and we're trying to fix that. We're trying to get to where the audits are being done earlier in the year. Because now it's October and you're getting financial reports that don't mean anything to you anymore. But if you got them in February or March, that means a whole lot more because it's relevant information, you know. And so if you can push on your end, I would greatly appreciate it. And we'll be involved. I know most of the auditors for the component units and so I push on my end as well.
Just to clarify on that, the component units, that's specifically referring to our special service districts that you all serve on the boards for?
Okay, thank you.
So I just met with Canyonlands, just barely, I was in a meeting with them before. And so I talked to them and said, look, we're closing your books the end of February, first part of March, get your audit done. You know, we'll get it to the auditor. So it's done. EMS. The song waste just was late this year. So a lot of the major ones were significantly late. So that's kind of what we're waiting on. Disagreements with management, there weren't any disagreements with management. Management representation. So we get a letter signed by management that is kind of a full disclosure letter. So when I'm reviewing everything, I'm reviewing our opinion, I'm reviewing the financial statements. I can be comfortable that our opinion is correct and that you've been forthcoming with any information that you have withheld anything. And that's the purpose of that letter. Consultations with other accountants, if there is a disagreement on an accounting principle or how we're handling a situation, you're more than welcome to go talk to a third-party auditor. The only request is that we also have access to that same third-party so that we can present our case and our understanding of what the code is or the accounting principle. And then we can all get on the same page and we can move forward with the audit. Yeah, that's pretty much it. So if you want to flip to the page, oh, you're not on that management letter. The very last part of the management letter is the findings. There weren't any internal control findings this year and there were no state compliance findings this year. So congratulate your staff or pat them on the back. They do a good job. And in the few years that I've worked with Cody on the internal control stuff, I know that we've kind of cleaned stuff up and had you do a lot of different things in the management's offices, the staff offices, to be able to get to a point where there's not internal control findings. Last year, there were a couple of findings that we just have to address and give you the status on. Last year, there was excess budget. So you went over budget last year. And that was, I don't know, if you remember, it was in the Health Department, Domestic Violence Fund, Capital Project Fund and Healthcare. However, that appears to have been addressed and corrected. There weren't any issues of that during 2021. And then deficit fund balance. So last year, Domestic Violence Fund had a deficit fund balance. It was a really small one. But that was corrected this period as well. So both of the prior findings are basically considered closed. Now you've addressed them and corrected them. So is there any questions for me?
But basically, we're okay.
Yeah, doing a good job, doing better.
Doing a good job.
Not perfect, but doing better.
Great.
And to remind those or just to make clear to those who might have been unaware, this is our first year working with John and his firm for our audit. And I think it's going to be really great moving forward for the financial health of the county. And I have to take a moment to thank the Clerk's Office staff, Kristi Backus, Jana Smith, Jana Kyle, Cassie Rose, who's no longer with us, Renee, Treasurer Kaufman, Associate Administrator Hall. I'm probably missing some people too, but it's a real team effort putting this together and working with John. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Gabe and John.
Good.
Thank you. All right. All right. Very educational. Moving on, Utah Geological Survey Matheson Wetlands Study Presentation. We have Catherine Leidig from the Utah Geological Survey Groundwater and Wetlands Program. Welcome. Thanks for sitting through all that.
Do you have my presentation?
It's on the.
It's on.
Yeah, Alicia.
It's in her packet. It's in her packet. I read it too.
I can probably start some. Catherine Leidig with Utah Geological Survey Groundwater and Wetlands Program. And so we, as a group, are studying the Matheson Wetlands and we're looking at developing a water budget for the wetlands and refining any that have been done in the past, adding a lot more detail. We're also looking at a brine layer that's underplaying the freshwater in the wetland or below the wetland. That's part of the Valley Field Aquifer here. And then part of that, we're looking at spring water. There are springs issuing from the Glen Canyon Group east of Highway 191 that feed freshwater to the preserve. So that's going to be really key. We're looking at if there are fluctuations in those going on, anything like that. And then the last bit, we're looking at vegetation and trying to do some vegetation mapping. We have a whole wetlands group dedicated to that. So they're going to be putting their efforts. That effect, kind of why that's important for Grand County too. I guess I already touched on it. So we're looking at two of the different aquifers that you guys rely on, the Glen Canyon and the Valley Field. Looking at how surface water is interacting with groundwater through there. And as we're building this water budget that's specific to Matheson Wetlands, you know, there are pieces of that that are going to apply further into Spanish Valley. So there's Matheson. We need to start there. So here's our field area. Each of the orange dots on that map are wells. Each of the blue little Xs there, crosses are a place where monitoring surface water. So we have really good coverage in the preserve. Groundwater flow through this area is generally from the southwest, sorry, southeast to northwest flowing through. So we're watching the flow again, thanks to that great spread of wells that are already out in the wetland. All right. So like I was saying, we're trying to watch for changes in flow rate coming from the springs issuing from that Glen Canyon Group. So here's just a little chart that's showing some of the data points that we've collected so far on flow rates. The gray triangles are Watercrest Springs, Springs Ranch. And then we have Duck Puddles, North and South, which are two technically horizontal wells, basically springs. And those were formerly called the Water Park. Great. So.
On the previous graph, how many years was the horizontal?
Oh, that was, I think it's just over a year. It starts in September 21. So then, like I said, we have all this infrastructure already in place where we're able to monitor the groundwater. So we've placed pressure transducers in basically every wall that we could. And then we take hand measurements of the others about once a month. The pressure transducers and those wire level measurements are giving us an idea of how the groundwater is fluctuating. We can compare that with things like, you know, what's happening to the Colorado River at the same time, et cetera, et cetera. One of the special things we have are eight transducers that are also measuring slinity though. So that's what these graphs are showing. So the, I think it's red, yes, red line is the salinity curve. And the blue line is the groundwater. So we're seeing how the salinity in the well is changing. Or I think it's specific conductivity technically here, but I'm trying to figure salinity with the groundwater. All right. So touching just back on that brine layer. The origins of it are likely the Paradox Formation and that's kind of shown here. It's hard to see a little bit. You can kind of see the Colorado River flowing across the top of the graphic there. And then all the blue is that Glen Canyon Group sandstone. And that's just kind of saying like, that's what's at the surface for your bedrock. But that red is where your surface bedrock is the Paradox Formation. And so again, likely source will be doing chemical analysis. So to continue to get at that brine layer, really try to constrain its location, describe if it's fluctuating at all. We are looking at, or we have already done, some electromagnetic induction logging. And that's where they go. It's David O'Leary with USGS is working with us on this. And they actually put a probe down in the wells and they're looking at resistivity with depth and how that's changing. This is really important for us because another way that we're going to look at the surface or, you know, the transition from freshwater to brine across the entire preserve is using transient electromagnetic surveys. Whole mouthful, but those are going to give us this plane review. These give us points and we can use these points to calibrate that plane that we're developing. So again, sorry, I'll just rush through. So you can go to the next slide. So this is what, or these are examples of what the transient electromagnetic surveys produce. So kind of hard to see, but the top two images are in that plan view, map view. So we have the resistivity essentially from zero to five meters. And then you can see the difference between that image and the one to the right where it's at a lower depth, five to 10 meters deep. And then you can also develop cross-sections to showing the change in resistivity across a region in that way of salt. So yeah, again, those are just examples from elsewhere. That's what we'll be incorporating. And like I said, another bit is this vegetation mapping. And so again, everything we're doing is going to be able to be repeated, whether it's by us or someone else down the line. So the vegetation mapping is going to be using this National Wetlands Inventory kind of method. Just tweaked a little bit for this area. It'll establish some baseline conditions so we can come back in the future, look at how the vegetation might have changed. It's also going to help us estimate evapotranspiration, which is a big part of that water budget calculation is how much water, you know, being lost to ET. And then they've already started, oh, if you flip back just quick. So they have started doing some of that mapping. So the squiggles on that map are lines that were delineated in the eighties. And so you can see they're drying lakes or ponds where there aren't ponds anywhere necessarily. And then it's kind of hard to see, but that brown isn't land surface. It's actually showing like current canopy height, which is indicating that the woody vegetation has also changed. All right. So the fun part, budgeting. So we are proposing to partner with Grand County on this in addition to our other partners at a cost to Grand County of $22,000 that we would be matching. And this is just in addition to our existing budget. So the total budget on there for this fiscal year is $139,000. Our partner total right now of that would be $62,000. UGS would be paying the rest. And then we propose also for fiscal year '24 that Grand County's contribution would be $12,000. Again, we'd be matching that at 100%. We could lump that all into a single proposal too for you.
Who are those other funders? What was CR?
CR, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So it's the Colorado River Authority of Utah. Yeah. And so we have Colorado River Authority of Utah, Nature Conservancy, Wildlife Resources, Water Rights. You kind of touched on this as like developing groundwater or the water budget for the Mathesons. But will this help us clarify kind of that big question for residents of Spanish Valley, like how much water do we have here to use? Does this help clarify some of the discrepancies that we're in the other studies that have been done?
I think it would be in addition to those. And I think there's an aspect of this project. I think there, some of our partners are hoping that this project would expand. And that's just, I mean, out there. You know, there are no specific plans for that yet, but there have been conversations. And I think that future would be more. So hopefully this would be a step in that direction.
I was out there. I went out there with the division and I think you were there when the division was out there. There also Hugh. And so at least from my memory of that meeting was more like the concern of water in the wetlands for wildlife, for example. But also I know, to expand on that brine layer a little bit, if my memory serves me, there was some concerns about, we don't really know what's happening with that brine layer, what could happen with that brine layer. So maybe expand on that just a bit.
So there are concerns that if freshwater availability changes, that that brine can fluctuate, at which point, yes, you'd see possible impacts to the vegetation, to water quality and then, you know, possibly salinity charge to the Colorado River.
It's my understanding the brine layer could also threaten the city's water rights and sources of water. So I'm curious whether the city is being courted as a partner and where they are on with this. Or am I wrong?
They've been asked at times, yeah. Mark Stillson, I think, is here. For Water Rights, he's been coordinating that. So yeah, nothing so far from the city. We're aware they have a lot going on.
So regarding what you asked before, so yeah, this will be a real major refinement of part of what the USGS did. The wetlands are kind of the endpoint of the groundwater system in the valley. And so that discharge will reflect what's going on upgrading in the rest of the valley. And then we also hope to, are hoping to kind of provide some tools for wildlife and the nature conservancy for long-term management of the health of the preserve. If their water supply is decreasing, they need to know how much water they can put where to support the critical vegetation that forms that.
I know when we went there, they were just finishing that nursery. Is that correct? Or I can't remember what species it was. Yeah, right. So they built a little kind of fry nursery. I don't know if I'm saying that appropriately. Yeah, anyways. So it's pretty cool, but it needs water.
We monitor the flow into that pond as well as dispersed throughout.
So I guess my question is related to some of these others, but it seems like over the last few years, you know, we've been asked to fund various studies about groundwater, which makes sense. But I'm just not sure how this one fits into the big picture. Like is, is like if we, you know, suppose we only had $100,000 to spend studying the aquifer, is this where we want to do it? Or is this really only affect the wetlands and doesn't affect our drinking water, things like that?
Well, to me, but of course, you know, I'm a wildlife person. I mean, I think it's a more holistic view of.
Is it a contribution to wildlife or is this like preserving our, I mean, our water supply? You know, which one is it?
Well, I think Chrissy's point too, I mean, we don't know what that brine layer could feasibly. Yeah, anyways, we don't really know what the repercussions of it could be to groundwater. Understandably, it's the end of the line, but.
I think Mark has something to say about that. I think Mark would like to contribute.
Maybe we should take down the presentation.
Right, and have a.
Then have the gallery view.
Go ahead, Mark.
So I appreciate what Catherine and Hugh have presented and they have done a great job. And we're excited about the information they're gathering. And to answer the question about how does this help us understand the groundwater rights and future development on those rights, it's a critically important piece. The 2019 USGS study was a big comprehensive. The 2019 USGS study was a big comprehensive picture, but they didn't go into detail, and they left us with a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And one of them is down around the wetlands. So the water that's passing through the wetlands currently underneath and, and coming back into the, into the end of Mill Creek and into the wetlands itself, represents the water in the hydrologic system that might still be available for development by, for instance, Moab City, or Grandwater, or San Juan County. So understanding that dynamic and whether or not that water can be pulled out without harming the wetlands is a very critical piece of information that we need as, you know, applications come in front of us and as development moves forward in, in Moab, Spanish Valley. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, I think that helps, Mark. Thanks.
How many years of data do you need, Mark?
As many as we can.
Okay.
You know, we want, and that was one of the important points that when we sat down with UGS in the beginning is, there's been a lot of monitoring that's been done in the wetlands in the past, but it was, it, it hasn't been sustained. And so we asked UGS that whatever they do, they incorporate it into a long-term monitoring program, so that these wells will continue to be monitored well past this study, so it can help inform our decisions going forward. And that, that interaction between that freshwater layer and the brine layer is poorly understood. And, and Tom, who's your next presenter, is going to talk about trying to get a better understanding of that. It's obviously, the wetlands are an important piece of Moab's identity, and we'd like to do the best we can to make sure that as we look at decisions regarding water rights, that we, we take those important points into consideration. And, and to do that, we just need better and more data, which is, which is the, which is the point of this study.
So, so in summary, then, it sounds like you're saying that if Grand County's got, you know, some limited moderate budget to spend on better understanding our, our water supply, this would be a good place to spend that money?
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, there's three, there's three critical areas in Moab, Spanish Valley that we identified as needing more research. The wetlands area, the area around the golf course, and the area up around Ken's Lake. So we've started down at the wetlands, and we hope in the future to look at these other two areas as well.
We can talk more about the budget and the actual funding of this during the action items, and just leave this up for presentation, but those action items are coming up soon.
Yeah, right. Thanks, sir.
I did talk to Chris today about what he thought would be the best movement forward he gave me, or his opinion was, so I can share that.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Much appreciated.
Sorry that you had to sit through that.
All right. Our next report, or presentation, I'm sorry, is Colorado River and Matheson Wetlands Salinity Study Proposal, Tom Marston, Investigations Chief with the USGS Utah Water Science Center.
Hello, everybody. You may clear away.
Yeah.
Yeah, as you said, my name is Tom Marston with USGS Utah Water Science Center, Investigation Department of Grand County. Sorry, can't either. We can drink my energy, like we all.
Actually, Tom, you're, hold on, you're, yeah, your sound is coming across Garble a little bit. Like, yeah.
Hey, I wondered if I, in a second, I am on the phone as well.
Sounds like your connection might be just a little bit slow.
Okay. I see you on the phone.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, right. Yeah. You have, you have a pretty severe echo in there. Yeah, turn off your computer speaker.
I'm out now.
That's better.
Okay. My name is Tom Marston. I'm getting still some pretty bad feedback in there.
That sounded better.
Okay. I'm in Investigation Department of Salt Lake City. I also, um, I'm the USGS liaison in the Colorado River Salinity Control Forum, as well as the Investigations Chief in Salt Lake City. And I will, I will represent both functions today in terms of, of the interest and what I've, am going to present and propose. Let me share my screen real quick. So as mentioned before by the Utah Geological Survey, the brines that have, exist in Spanish Valley have been known for quite a while. They've been sampled and studied now for, for several decades, and, and their overall impact on specifically the Colorado River have always been of interest to various groups in the region. And there's been various efforts across the years that have looked at that interface between the alluvial aquifer, it's the freshwater aquifer, and the, and the high salinity brine associated with the Paradox Formation that underlies it. As you can see in this figure, this is a figure that's from a master's thesis completed in the, at the University of Utah recently by Nora Nelson. We find the, the highest concentration of, of brines in shallow wells here in the northwest portion of the wetlands as you get closer to the Colorado River. And in a very focused portion of the bank here just north of where Mill Creek discharges into the Colorado River. As I said before, the Salinity Control Forum has funded numerous studies looking at salt loading in the Colorado River, essentially in the whole upper basin of the Colorado River. One of, one such study that was completed in the, in the early 2000s was to conduct a, a water quality synoptic, or a series of sampling events down river at a similar discharge to look at salt loading as you move down through the system. And so this study was published in 2014. What they found in this study, which is shown in, it was not done all at one period in time, just because loading the river takes time and sampling is rigorous, but as you move down through the area considered the Moab Valley Anacline, on through, past Mill Creek towards the Cane Creek, Cane Creek Anacline, we didn't see a huge rise in dissolved solid loads, which at the, at the time, the forum was comfortable not doing too much more investigation based on these findings. Essentially compartmentalizing this with a result of the Spanish Valley that was not contributing a whole lot of, of salt to the river. Here as of recent, with the long-term drought that we've been experiencing in the, in the upper basin, the Colorado River is, has reached some near-record low flows, especially over this last winter. And our office saw this as an opportunity to go and sample at an extremely low flow in the Colorado River with the, the idea that this would give us the best chance of seeing any salt that was derived from the Paradox Formation brines discharging into the Colorado River. And so Chris Wachowski and his team went out and sampled in March earlier this year when the river was discharging at 2,400 cubic feet per second at Cisco. And this was just an ad hoc type of a, an exercise with a, a water quality son mounted to a weighted troll. And we essentially were out fishing for salt. And what we, the way that we kind of targeted our, our ad hoc sampling was to use data that was produced by Phil Gardner more than a decade ago in his master's thesis that identified areas he felt would be hotspots where brine would potentially be discharging into the river. And there, those are shown here on the figure. There was also electromagnetic induction studies that were, that were done with this past USGS study that identified this section of the bank of the Colorado River as a potential hotspot for where brine may be discharging into the river. And so Chris really kind of went out and targeted those areas with point measurements. And these measurements, this is just a Google Earth image with specific conductance results plotted on, on the map. As you come into the valley, the, the river has a conductance signature around 1440 microsemen per centimeter. Obviously, there's some error associated with environmental sampling, there's scatter here, but for the most part, these are very consistent, specific conductance readings all down through this section of the river. And as you approach this, this bank that was identified by the electromagnetic conductance studies, Chris was able to very positively identify areas of the river that were impacted by salt discharge from the brine layer in the Matheson Wetlands. These were persistent for the whole height of the water, water column on the Moab bank of the river, and were persistent all the way down through the confluence with, with Mill Creek. He also took some readings in the river post-Spanish Valley, down here near the portal, and we see specific conductance values elevated essentially 10 microsemen per centimeter or more above what is coming into the valley. Now those, you know, those values seem, you know, not very large, but the, the load of salt required to raise 2,500 cubic feet per second, essentially 10 microsemen per centimeter is not insignificant. And so this, this finding is of, of concern to various users in the region, specifically those who participate in the Colorado River Salinity Control Program. And this is just a more zoomed-in version of the previous study, or a previous slide. And so part of this proposed work is to go and actually do a quantitative measure of load, essentially replicate what Chris did in a much more rigorous way, to actually calculate what the total load at low flow contribution of the Spanish Valley brine is to the river. That's of interest to the forum, and I think it's of interest to, to many other parties. In addition to that, the part of this proposal is to better, it's essentially fill data gaps identified by Utah Geological Survey with their study. And these polygons were produced by Utah Geological Survey as areas that could, should be expanded in terms of additional monitoring wells that should be installed in these areas to better refine their monitoring program, as well as for us to better understand the surface of the, of the freshwater brine interface. Based on the work that I just showed, we would probably want additional wells in this area down here, where we know, based on Chris Wachowski's work, that we have a discharge of brine into the river. You've been distributed the proposal that I have been working on here for the last eight or nine months. I've presented this to various user groups in the area, the Moab River Partnership, the city, and now the county. This is a cooperatively funded proposal with half, well, roughly half of the proposed amount being funded by the Salinity Control Program via Bureau of Rec. That shows up here as a 60, 67, 500, with the other half being split between the USGS and a conglomerate of Utah State Cooperators, specifically the Utah State Engineers Office as well as Water Resources. So that's 45,000 is the total that would be split between the Utah Cooperative Agencies. The second part of it, to drill all of the monitoring wells, there's also a small-scale pump test associated with the new wells. The pump test is designed to expand the understanding that we have that Utah Geological Survey has been working on, to essentially see how susceptible the freshwater brine interface is to de-watering of, of the freshwater aquifer above it. So we have a very small-scale test to look at that relationship, but that would be included in this call. And with that, I'll take questions.
Questions for Tom?
Can you talk a little bit more about the pump test? What, what does that look like and what does it tell us?
Well, the pump test would essentially just be, so we would place one of these monitoring, the new monitoring sites that would be drilled near an existing monitoring network or, or monitoring well, so that we could look at, I mean, the original proposal was to do this at a much larger scale. There's a lot of red tape associated with doing a large-scale pump test, as well as environmental concerns that close to wetlands. And so we, we throttled that back a little bit to not have to, to deal with that in the, on the front go of this. But essentially, de-watering, if, how this interface changes relative to how much freshwater, how much fresh groundwater sits above the brine is unknown. This is the piece of, of all of this work that, that our office did, as well as UGS has done, that is really unknown and, and makes some folks a little uneasy that if freshwater consumption in the valley were to increase, would that change the elevation of the freshwater brine interface in the, in the wetlands? And with that change in, in elevation, an increased discharge of brine into the river? So the pump test is supposed to mimic that phenomenon on a small scale.
Thank you.
So this proposal really is, goes to look at the salinity levels in the Colorado more than anything else. Where's the other one? Does that make sense, Mary?
Yeah, this is.
It's both.
Great.
It's both because there's also, is that five new monitoring wells that would be paid for by the Salinity Control Forum if we make the logo match?
Correct.
And would those have long-term data collection associated with them?
They would be, they would be added to the UGS network, and for as long as, as UGS plans to, to monitor them. I do, I can say this on behalf of the forum. So the pump test is supposed to mimic that phenomenon on a small scale.
Thank you.
So this proposal really is goes to look at the salinity levels in the Colorado more than anything else. Where's the other ones? Does that make sense, Mary?
Yeah, this is it's both because there's also is that five new monitoring wells that would be paid for by the Salinity Control Forum if we make the logo match?
Correct.
And would those have long term data collection associated with them?
They would be added to the UGS network. And for as long as as UGS plans to to monitor them. I do I can say this in behalf of the forum. They themselves are very interested in a long term monitoring program associated with this.
So this would dovetail with the UGS study and
Correct.
Expand it, it sounds like.
So it does, they do.
Okay.
And Mark, would you chime in here or is are you is your office gonna participate in that co op match?
We are encouraging them to, yes. I would like to see our office put some money into this. We're stretched pretty thin right now, but we're continuing to advocate for it. What Tom has proposed is, again, goes to the heart of the question, if we develop more freshwater groundwater up the valley, is it going to somehow impact the wetlands? You know, if we remove more of the freshwater layer that's sitting on top of the brine, what's gonna happen? Well, we don't know the answer to that question. And so that's what we're trying to get at with these type of studies. This is an important question to answer for both Moab City, Grand County, and San Juan County. There's a limited amount of groundwater left to use. And if the major water users stakeholders in the in the valley want to continue to develop it, we would like to do so in a in a manner that doesn't negatively impact the wetlands and other water users and the Colorado River for that matter, too.
Yeah, Mary. How long do these studies go before we get any report as to what is learned? How many how many years?
The synaptic study the synaptic study essentially in the river, we would have data back quickly. That work was proposed to start this winter. The drilling side of this really hinges on driller schedule. And with drought in the West, drillers are under incredible pressure right now.
We've already, Mark, we've already approached this. So the city of Moab has been approached. Has San Juan County been approached to be a partner in these? And and maybe I just missed it. I'm sorry.
Yes, both Moab City and San Juan County have been approached and both have said yes, kind of. So we need to go back to them again and and do just what we're doing here, get in the commission meeting with them and say, hey, this is an this is an important issue and it's an important question and you need to be a partner in it.
So they have not written a check is what you're saying.
Correct. Yeah.
We'll be the leaders. Sure.
Yeah, you guys are always the leaders on it. I'm very good. We appreciate it.
Thanks.
For our project, about halfway through. And so we're looking at
You got to come up here.
Yeah.
Otherwise, our people that are watching on this.
Sure. I I just wanted to add that in terms of when the information will be available for our project, we're looking at early twenty twenty four, early to mid twenty twenty four, publishing the final results. And that will include recommendations for ongoing.
Have it. That's that's thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, any other questions for Tom or Mark? All right, looks like, yeah, looks like that's it. Thank you so much, guys.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah. All right. Moving on, that is it for presentations. We're we don't have any agency reports. We are up to ratification of payment of bills, total Grand County bills, the amount of six hundred thirty thousand three hundred fifty nine dollars and thirty eight cents. Total Grand County payroll in the amount of three hundred twenty three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars and sixty cents for total bills and payroll in the amount of nine hundred fifty four thousand two hundred twenty nine dollars and ninety eight cents.
So moved.
Thanks, Trish.
Second.
All right, any discussion on bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All in favor? Motion passes seven to nothing. All right, I could. We are up to general reports, commission member disclosures. Anybody have anything that they need to disclose about today's agenda? Yes, Josie?
Oh, I will generally disclose that in discussion and possible motions around special events and special events ordinance that I am employed by a special event in town and one that is in consideration for quarterly ITA review, attending the Moab Music Festival.
Right, thanks, Josie. Sarah?
My sister has is one of the applicants listed for receiving funds from the STAR STAR grants.
Thank you. All right. General Commission reports and future considerations. And let's see, I'll start with the other end over there, Sarah.
All right, I had a lot going on, but not many meetings. Oh, yes, I attended the Free Health Clinic Tour and what an amazing resource for the community. It's so exciting and it's nice just to see that space being developed. Yeah. It was amazing. And that's all.
All right, perfect. Kevin?
I have attended a couple of budget advisory board meetings since we last spoke, but I will not bore you with the details. We'll get to review that later. And I think other things I've been working on are be gonna be covered in other agenda items.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Josie?
Yeah, just a couple of things. On the tenth, I attended the candlelight vigil at City Hall for Indigenous Peoples' Day, but more specifically to to honor missing and murdered Indigenous women, which is a ongoing issue that was wonderful to spotlight. The next day on the eleventh, I also went on the kind of new health campus tour with the Moab Free Health Clinic. And I echo what Sarah said that it's just really exciting. I think that that spot, nothing better could have happened at that location. And I think that they are thinking big and and kind of throwing that intention out there and then getting the the financial support and the actual, you know, means to do it. And so I think it's incredibly exciting and I can't wait to see how it all shapes up. And it's moving pretty fast, I would say. Since things don't always. And then the next day on the twelfth, the Events Committee kind of worked through initially the intent to apply process, which we are, which we've already talked about for a couple hours and which we will talk about further in the meeting. And let's see, the Four Corners Community Health Board Meeting is still yet to come. But if you haven't seen their flyers, they're having a fiftieth anniversary celebration by screening a free movie in Swanee Park. I believe they are showing Grease and want people to dress up accordingly. And that's on October twenty eighth at seven P M.
Grease, is that what you said?
Grease. Awesome. All right, Commissioner. Commissioner Clapper.
I'll try to keep mine quick. Cemetery had their new board member in their first meeting, so that was nice to get to meet them and kind of bring them up to speed with kind of general operations and what the board does. The big takeaway from that meeting was concerns around flooding in the cemetery. There was some damage done at the first flood. And then in subsequent rainstorms, there has been additional flooding. So some repairs have been put on hold. And the road department has been out there kind of working on some of the culverts, which are adjacent to Sunset Memorial, and hopefully that that addresses some of the flooding that's been happening, which has unfortunately led to sunken graves, tilted headstones and the like. And so hopefully we can get that dialed in so that that's not an ongoing issue with additional rains. And now with the health department, the Health District, we had the same presentation from the Free Health Clinic that we had at our previous meeting. And they're just and the Health District is working on their budget season, so those meetings will be have been posted as open public meetings. They'll be going on the next few weeks and presented at the November regular scheduled meeting. Met with EMS Board today. They approved, adopted, I forget the term, my apologies, they started early this morning, their tentative budget for twenty twenty three. There was some good moves made to try to cover some of the gaps in staffing. And there was a discussion around a cola there with no final decision made on on what that amount would be just yet, or nothing set in stone, I should say. I believe that that's all I got.
Great, thanks, Trish.
I just had, the only thing I did was I went to a flood relief meeting with Ben and that was it. And I went hunting.
All right.
I've been a slacker.
Mary?
On the I went on the same tour. It was wonderful. On the eleventh, it was Travel Council meeting and they discussed the priorities for their budget for next year. They have a good board. They were very active and engaged, so that was great to see. Budget advisory. I'll go through all that. The site future committee for the Umtah Project had their first meeting. I attended it sporadically by Zoom and had a meeting with San Juan County, City of Moab, and the three entities to talk about where we need to work together in the future. And one thing we talked, we talked about two things, this fire department and also the noise from those machines that fly over.
Motorized paragliders.
Motorized paragliders. And if we have a do an ordinance in Moab, we have to make sure it fits into northern San Juan. So that's it. I kept a very short agenda.
Yeah, everyone's doing a good job of that. I'll try to continue in the same vein. I attended a Trail Mix meeting where we mostly discussed aspects of the elaborate Gemini travel management plan as it pertained to the kind of the different user groups that make up Trail Mix. And I missed a couple of meetings. I missed the T S S D meeting and the motorized trail committee meeting because I was in Cedar at the One Utah Summit put on by Governor Cox. And that was my first real excursion on behalf of Grand County. And I thought it was great. I got a lot out of it, made some connections and just kind of was able to see Grand County a little bit more as as part of the the whole, the big state. And look forward to continuing doing that kind of thing and and making connections at the at the state level, for sure. And I also, along with Mary and Kevin, attended the joint San Juan County Moab Grand County meeting yesterday. And that's it, short and sweet, too. So it is just after six o'clock, so it's time for our second Citizens to be Heard session. Is there anyone in the chamber who'd like to come forward and be heard? Is there anyone on Zoom who is present to make a comment? Doesn't look like it. So we will move on to elected official reports. Gabe?
I also attended the One Utah Summit last week, saw Jacques there. My main purpose in attending that summit was because I concluded my experience in the inaugural group of the Governor's Office Rural Utah Leadership Academy, Utah Rural Leadership Academy. Yeah, that's it. U R L A. So I got to have dinner with the lieutenant governor and the governor one more time and and sort of make solidify the contacts that I made in that program. And overall, it was a really worthwhile experience. And I thank the Governor's Office and Southern Utah University for facilitating. I'm not sure who the grand representative might be this year. I guess I have to confirm that. Other than that, public logic and accuracy test was completed yesterday at two P M. So that's where we tested and verified the proper functioning of all of the election equipment. In our case, it's the Express Vote, which is the name of our voting machine that we'll have out on the lobby, as well as the DS two hundred, which is our tabulator. And that's what we use to tabulate and count up all the votes. We run the ballots through those scanners. And as far as the election goes, yeah, there's a lot going on in my office with with regards to that, a lot building up. I do know that the ballots we were sent to the post office at the end of day yesterday in Phoenix, Arizona. That doesn't mean they were mailed out yesterday because eighteenth today was the first day they could be mailed out. But I would wouldn't be surprised if they were getting to Salt Lake already by this time. And maybe, who knows, maybe a mail box, you know, they'll be in mailboxes this week. I'm quite certain of it. I bet I can't make any promises of that, of course. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Gabe. And it looks like our county attorney Sloan is
I had a question for
Oh, sure, sorry, Kevin.
So, yeah, sorry to spring this on you in a meeting rather than via an email, but have your do you think it'd be maybe at the next commission meeting, just giving like a ten minute summary of just all the election procedures and things like that? I mean, you know, there's a lot of interest in those things. And and my experience has been the people who watch elections up close, either in Grand County or San Juan County, anywhere are impressed by all the the care that's taken to make sure that, you know, it's accurate and stuff. So I just wanted to, you don't have to respond, but I just want to throw out the idea that it might be good to publicize that more than it has been in the past.
Thanks for this suggestion. I'd be happy to.
All right. All right, Christina?
I did want to give a quick update. Mostly I've been home with COVID, so that has not been fun. But I did get our answer to the Blue Ribbon Coalition and local ATV business complaint filed yesterday. And we've created a new tab on the Grand County Attorney's website where we're gonna upload all the pleadings. And the discovery process is gonna be really long, but I expect some interesting information come out of that. So I also plan to create a discovery tab so that the community can go there. They've got a bunch of different documentation related to the lawsuit. So that that portion of the website is grandcountyutah.net/attorney. On the left side of the page, there's some different links to different departments the county attorney's office is responsible for, including the C J C and the Family Sports Center. Underneath that, you're gonna see Blue Ribbon Coalition there. And if you click on that, you'll see a little summary about the litigation and also the pleadings filed so far. So that's the complaint and the answer. Now, keep updating it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Doesn't look like there's any other electeds on, so Commission Administrator Mallory.
I don't have much to report that hasn't been covered or won't be covered, so.
Okay, Quinn, did you have anything you wanted to report? Okay. Okay. Let's move on to the approval of minutes for the October fourth, twenty twenty two County Commission Regular Meeting and the Joint Planning Commission Workshop.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October fourth, two thousand and twenty two, regular meeting and joint planning commission workshop.
Thanks, Trish.
I'll say it.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes by Commissioner Hadeen and second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion of the minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes? And that passes six to nothing unanimously with Commissioner Began absent. All right, we are on to general business action items. And we'll start with item A, cooperative funding request from U G S for maths and wetland study. And presenting is Commissioner Stock.
Well, luckily, we had some experts in here to present the details of this. But essentially, they're coming to us for a cooperative funding request to help fund these studies. And I wanted to give you guys a little background. We have money budgeted in the Commission discretionary fund. And what we had set aside, I got the breakdown from Chris, was fifteen thousand dollars for the Pat Creek gauge, which we spent this year. We spent sixteen thousand five hundred and nine thousand six hundred which we spent this year, we spent 16,500 and 9,600 of that is an ongoing expense for maintenance of that, so next year there'll be that. And then we set aside $10,000 for groundwater monitoring and $70,000 for monitoring wells. And all of this happened before we joined the National Groundwater Monitoring Network or before we were allowed to join. We received a grant to be able to join the National Groundwater Monitoring Network. And so I think when I had set aside $70,000 for monitoring wells, it was before we even knew of the existence or our, like, that we could actually apply for that program. And in the long term, that program will open us up to a world of funding for future groundwater monitoring wells. And it just takes a few years to get established and then to identify your needs before you can do that. So rather than diving right into putting out an RFP for somebody to study where we need a new monitoring well out near Kinslake, I just go for it. I thought it would be better to just go through the National Groundwater Monitoring Process and apply for future funds through that organization. So we have, basically, we have $80,000 kind of set aside loosely for water monitoring, water monitoring wells that we're free to use and we don't have to use, but that's there.
I was a little confused about their ask because there was a couple numbers. So can you kind of clarify exactly what they're asking for right now?
For the Matheson study?
Yeah.
They're looking for $22,111 for this fiscal year.
Okay.
Their fiscal year. Yeah, and then $12,000 for the next fiscal year. Something that Chris had brought up is that because our finances are great for this last year, we're, we have the budget, but next year, our budget perhaps is gonna be a little bit tighter. And so I had the thought, if we feel inclined to fund the study, we could just do it all this year because we have the money.
And that's what Chris suggested.
I asked him. So basically, 34,111.
Yeah.
In total, just right now.
Yeah, and I mean, we could talk about if that makes sense to fund that entire amount or a lesser amount. I think it's a great study, I mean, it seems like, like Mark was saying, it's an essential piece to this puzzle that is very important for us to answer. And as like Grand County, why would Grand County fund this? I think based on the fact that a lot of additional development is possible in Grand County and we're trying to do the right thing with winding our land use code to water use. What we need, though, really, is like baseline data. And the way to get that is through paying for these studies. And so that's why I think it's, it makes a lot of sense.
I guess the question I had, I agree, these studies are worthwhile. But I was a little bit confused about just how the costs are gonna be in portion between Grand County and Moab City and and other entities and maybe I wasn't paying close enough attention during the.
No, we're eating it.
Yeah, with this one, it seems like the city is not inclined to fund the Matheson study at this time, but though, I'm not sure if they've made a final.
Right.
Final answer on that one.
Okay, so maybe we should just make a note to ourselves that next, next time there's a study that's funded, we can.
And San Juan County, right.
Their turn. Or alternatively, we could say, you know, we'll fund up to a certain amount, but encourage the coordinators of the study to make the same presentation of Moab City and things like that.
Yeah, and I mean, the Division of Water Rights has contributed. Yeah, I could, so the city of Moab has some of the oldest water rights in the valley and they're also the place where probably the less new water use is gonna, right, be required or less water is gonna be required for future development. So in a way, Moab City is, they're sitting on their old water rights and they're like, we're here and we're gonna do what we are doing, they're kind of a steady force, whereas Grand County, there's more room for development. I think it's our obligation to help fund the studies that show us what our baseline is that we're even working against. So that's where I kind of understand maybe why the city of Moab, I'd rather that they fund a co-op match with us, but I I do think it's our responsibility as, as the county with the newer water rights. But in in that same regard, I think that San Juan's Spanish Valley Special Service District should also be contributing funding to these studies.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. So I move to approve the cooperative funding request and expedite, expediting funding. Did that word make any, did I just make that up?
Expedited.
Expedite, sorry about that, the funding for 2023 and take it out of this year's budget for a total amount of $34,111 for our fiscal year 2022.
And then authorize the chair to sign all future documents.
That's not necessary anymore.
Oh, it's not? Okay, even if they have to do an MOU.
We put it in our bylaws, but it's assumed.
Sorry. We used to have to say it.
After every single motion.
Thank you, Trish, I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion by Trish and a second by Sarah, any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I would just, you know, we're talking about entities who who aren't contributing at this time, but there are a lot of other entities who are. And so this, this study isn't being funded solely by Grand County. This, and I think it's nice to be a contributing member. And as this is a one-time expenditure and we have, we have the availability to do that in this year's budget, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, well said, Evan. Alright, any more discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion passes seven to nothing. Alright, we'll move on to B, cooperative funding request from the USGS for salinity studies. And again, back to Commissioner Stock.
Okay, so this one, like we heard from Tom Marston, is a USGS study kind of in in a similar realm. They're in the Mathesons, but they're asking slightly different questions and adding some monitoring wells. Part of this clearly is very important to downstream water users, the salinity load in the Colorado River. And that's why the Colorado River Salinity Forum has agreed to fund almost $67,500 towards new monitoring wells, but they need a local co-op match and the USGS can be part of that. But they need then local matches in order to get that funding. So I put in here, basically, when I put $19,361, that was kind of like the cap. That gets us to $70,000 of spending this year on on these studies. So I think we should probably do less than that. But I do think it's a good study and it's a benefit that we get monitoring wells and the pump test.
What was, was their ask, 45,000, is that, am I remembering right?
Yeah, they, yep, the co-op match would be 45,000. And like Mark said, they've kind of maxed out their Division of Water Rights funding for the year. But I think they've, they've approached Moab City and seemed like they had approached San Juan County as well. I, I think maybe something like $10,000 would be a good number, but I'm on to discussion.
Do you want to make a motion, Sarah?
I have a quick question with, so you said they need 45,000? What if they don't get it?
That's what, I, I don't, I tried to ask that question at the Ma Berry Watership Partnership Meeting. It seemed like the USGS always operates at a, like a 66, 33% match with local cooperators. So I'm not sure if they would have to shrink their study, maybe they wouldn't do the pump test part of it, which honestly is the part that is maybe more relevant to us as good in our concern for the wetlands. Though, all of it is gonna help, like, explain that brine layer better. Well, I'm not sure.
I wonder if we want to put in the motion something to the effect that contingent on the funding, they find the funding to do the project rather than just, you know, that way if something falls through on it, which I pray it doesn't, I really think it's an important study, but then we won't lose our money.
But they also might be using this to inspire others, right? Now they can go to their other, these other entities and say, we got this much from Grand County.
Yeah, we were given a.
They can't, if they can't do the study, I think we need to let it know that they, we get the money back.
Yeah, well, I'm sure that that could also be written into the MOU that we have to sign with them. But I think that makes sense, Mary, that if the study's not gonna happen, yeah.
Or if we had the option to say this is to be used for the pump study portion.
Right.
If that's what we're interested in.
If we're making an example of of donating to this to try to entice other local agencies, maybe 15,000 would be appropriate. So it would be one third of the ask and then there's a couple other entities out there that might be able to contribute the same.
I mean, I like that, I do think we're in a, in a good position financially this year and we don't know about the future.
No, I, I will quibble about, I mean, any money we don't spend this year is money that helps us next year. So I, I think it's a little artificial to distinguish between this year and next year in spending money.
But I'm here to present.
Well, we cut that difference, too.
Right.
What?
We cut the difference, too, do 12, 5.
Yeah, and I mean, this funding was set aside in the 2022 budget, so it's not like it's just coming out of thin air.
Expecting. We wanted, so this would, it was a 19,361, meaning that we've, we've tapped out that fund.
Actually, I mean, that equals $70,000, but then we had, I got the numbers a little bit late, but then there was also this other $10,000 for groundwater monitoring that was set aside, so we still haven't spent at all. I thought we just had 70,000, but we do have $80,000 set generally aside.
Then I think we should fund the whole thing. Because the water is prob, I mean, that's our probably most important thing in the, not the whole thing, the 19, excuse me.
Use, use the entire amount that we, that we have.
That she suggested in here, because water, you know, and it's.
No, no, when she said the whole, I thought she was meaning the 45.
That's why I clarified real fast, I heard it's like. Yeah, I, I guess also, I mean, we did receive that grant, so there's like 45,000 extra dollars of funding from the National Groundwater Monitoring just coming into the county for, for water monitoring just because we chose to be a part of that program, so these are all good things, I think. So do we have any idea how much money we want?
I move to approve the funding of $19,361 to the USGS for salinity studies on the Colorado River and Matheson Wetlands. And authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
I'll second that.
Alright, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any discussion on this?
I'm sorry, I missed the amount.
It was, it was the $19,361. In the packet. No discussion? Alright, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed?
I like the lesser amount. I would want it to pass, so.
Thank you, Sarah, for doing all that work. I think it's better to be in front of the ball than be behind it.
And I like being the example.
Motion passes six to one with Commissioner Clapper in opposition.
You tell Mark to take that, those others.
Alright, we will move on. Item C, adopting ordinance, repealing and replacing, Chapter 8.16, Special Events of the Grand County General Ordinances and Related Ordinance Number 658. Mallory?
We've discussed.
Yes, this is coming before you once again with some of the changes that we talked through at the last meeting. And I think we feel good about it this time and are working on other things as the next steps that would align with this, assuming it's approved tonight.
Yeah, I, I've had a lot of conversations with Mallory about this recently and I, I think this is, you know, a big milestone in our handling of special events. I'm, I'm very happy that staff like Angie and Rachel were able to put together so much information for the hearing today and it went a lot more smoothly than I was expected, expecting, so that was, that was nice. And, but yeah, I want to especially thank Mallory because I think she's put a ton of time in it and I gave it a fairly careful read earlier today and looks, looks pretty good to me. I mean, I'm sure we're gonna continue to tweak it, but I, I feel good having this in place. I'll give others a chance to talk, but I, there are some small edits that I want to work into the motion, so. Okay, hopefully I can make the motion as time.
And I'd also like to very much thank County Attorney Sloan for, for working on this as well. I think she worked pretty closely with Mallory and has been instrumental in, yeah, and, and as well as Angie and Rachel, too.
Yep, yeah, it's been, definitely Christina should be included in the, amongst the top ranks of people.
Definitely, it's been a collaborative effort, but, but you guys have, yeah, done the lion's share of the heavy lifting, so thank you very much. Yeah, it's been a, been a long process.
And it will continue.
Right.
Okay, so I move to repeal Chapter 816, Special Events of the Grand County General Ordinances and the Related Ordinance Number is 658, and adopt new Chapters 8.16 Special Events and set forth in the attached ordinance and as Exhibit A with the following minor edit. In Section 816, 100B, Roman numeral. Yeah, numeral two, Item C, just to say local origin, sort of locally origin. And Item D, you know, need to fix the capitalization lines, so just, just some typos, but since, might as well get them out of the way. Alright, well, there's the only edits, Kevin. Oh, I should have mentioned, there, there were other edits earlier today, so the, unless you're downloading this thing as of about an hour ago when Mallory updated it, there's some additional fairly small edits compared to what was, has been in the packet earlier, just some misnumberings of sections and, or that got replaced by an "and", but nothing that really changes the meaning of the ordinance.
Great. Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Walker, second by Commissioner Clapper. Further discussion on special events ordinance?
I think one person we forgot to thank was Kevin. He has been really the commissioner that's taken the lead on this and has worked very hard. Obviously, able to find those little teeny mistakes, so thank you, Kevin.
Definitely, thanks, Kevin. Alright, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Well, so that one, the "and" was fixed, I can't get the online to work. And 060.
The "and" was, was fixed, yes.
Did y'all discuss that in the workshop, that that's what the commission wants?
I think so, I, I think it was clearly intent because of the following segment after that. So, but, but we didn't discuss it explicitly in the workshop. If, if you want to look at it, if you refresh your main agenda, then you'll have a correct link to the latest version.
The, the discussion, guys, is in Section 060, it lays out the characteristics for low-impact events. Kevin went to make sure that was an "and" and there was a conflict between two sections, which meant you have to meet all of those characteristics to be a low-impact event. What we were finding as we prepared for the workshop and in the workshop is that most events are going to the commission, but you guys handled it really well. But you guys handled it really well today, and so as long as, you know, today happened um, according to what you thought would happen, um, then that's great. If you want to see fewer events, then you might want an or there instead of an and. So it did seem to, important enough to, to.
I, I thi- I think if we want to see fewer events changing to an or is, is probably not the right solution because then you could have an event with a vast numbers of people that's causing, closing all the roads. But unless they check all four of those boxes, they would be considered low events, so. So, so I, I agree, we need to think about what events, you know, what's the dividing line between low and high impact events? But I, I think putting the and or in there is, is the right approach for the moment.
I'm comfortable with the and. We just had a vote, uh, I don't think that changed anything, so the motion passes unanimously. And we'll move on to item D, consideration of special event intent to apply submissions. This is what we workshopped earlier, uh, Angie Book and Rachel Bartlett.
Well, I'll read, um, the motion as stated in the background and leave off explaining all the events. I move to approve the following special event intent as applies for the first and second quarters of twenty twenty-three and/or if applicable. I move to, um, event sponsors interested in holding an event in Grand County must submit an ITA. The Special Event Advisory Committee, SEC, reviews all ITAs and determines if the proposed event is high or low impact. As for the special event ordinance, high-impact ITAs are reviewed by the County Commission at a quarterly meeting. The reviews are scheduled based on the quarter the proposed event would be held, and they are as follows.
Okay, um, so, uh, just, just a little bit more background. So we did, for people who are just turning in, we did have a two-hour workshop earlier today where we reviewed all the, looked at all the events in detail. And ended up approving most of the attempts to apply, but, but not all of them. And according to our just past special events ordinance, we need to make findings for when, when we deny something. So I'll incorporate that into the motion that I make. Great, Kevin, okay.
There was a additional email that came in since.
Yeah, and I, I spoke with Angie about that and, um, it, it felt to me like it's a little bit late in the game to be denying something based on past behavior. So I, it, I, I think there was a proposal that maybe we mixed things up a bit, but, um, I don't know.
Well, we got that in our email?
From, uh, the county attorney. And the topic had come up before.
Yeah, so, so one, one of the applicants, I think they were in the table I'm looking at, it was listed as an event that's been going on for a long time, but they haven't always gotten the permit because of disagreements about whether they needed a permit or not. Um, there, there had been some conflict, I think, in the past. So, um, so that didn't come up at our workshop, we didn't consider it, but it, it got, it was brought up afterwards. My, my feeling and, and, and anyone, Angie, please, if you disagree, please say so. But I, I think for an event that's been operating for a while, you know, with or without a per- permit, if we're gonna shut it down, there's kind of a higher standard for, you know, the reasons we need and the documentation we need. And just based on the information that I've seen in the email, um, I, I didn't feel comfortable doing that, so.
Do you have anything to add, Angie, or?
Well, and I just wanted to put it out there, uh, based on one event holder over another event holder. What's gonna be denied, I'd rather deny the one that has caused some conflict versus one who hasn't caused any conflict, whether, regardless of their history. They both have history, one just wants to add.
And, and again, I feel, I, I think when we're, the, I mean, I haven't made the motion yet, but the, um, the ITAs that we're not, not approving are both for new events that haven't operated here before, though in one case it's someone who's operated a, a different event at a different time. I, I just think, so I think that's a pretty easy reason for denial, but if you're gonna say that, hey, you've, you know, you've been causing problems in the past, I, I guess I would just want to have that written up better and be familiar with that written record before actually denying the event. So that, that is why I'm not comfortable denying that. And, you know, if this had come up a week ago, you know, maybe we could familiarize ourselves, but, um, Mary?
I'm wondering if we could, uh, approve it, uh, what, probation?
The, uh, oh, the, the.
The GON MOAB.
Okay, sure.
That, that way we, if, you know.
Okay, I'll, I'll add that to the emotion that, that we, we have concerns about as of that event and we're. Gonna be watching closely or something like that, or we, we, we request that the special events committee give us a report, detailed report on how that event goes this year, because.
And what, uh, let me go back to my email, what was it specific?
To clarify on that, we've expanded the post-event evaluation process. I don't think we need to create a condition around that because everyone is gonna have a closer look this time.
I was gonna say, I, I don't think we have like a probation.
We've had it in the past, remember?
I mean, there's a review process, but I, I think it's, I think when we said things are probationary, events are probationary in the past, there were, it was just kind of some verbiage to make us feel better.
I mean, there's that checkbox for is the applicant in good standing and then.
So can I go ahead and make the motion, Kevin? Um, so I move to approve the following special event, special event intent to applies for this is first and second quarters of twenty twenty-three, and I will note the ones where we, um, added some conditions and I will also note the ones on the list that, that we denied. And then I will list some findings, so this is still part, sorry about this, Gabe, but this is still part of the motion. Okay, so we've, we've got the list attached, I'm not gonna read all the ones that we approved, but there were two that we denied. One was the, um, number eighteen on my list, Grand Circle Trail Fest. The other was the, um, number twenty-five on my list, the new, um, spring Jeep Chamberry, not to be confused with the fall Jeep Chamberry, which is the one that's been happening for a long time. So that's, that's the list of approvals, um, conditions for the Amasabac Trail Race. Uh, we wanted the special events committee to work with them to institute a shuttle system and, um, make sure the packet pickup and other activities other than the race itself are done in town rather than out at the parking lot. And for the, um, Live at Red Cliffs event, um, again, we wanted the special event committee to work with them to institute a shuttle system on the river. And, um, and then finally, some findings, and, and I can email you this to you, Gabe. Uh, the, the following findings were relevant to our decision about which events to approve and deny. One, the current list of regularly occurring events has weighted heavily toward running, biking and motorized events. Two, April and May are both already saturated with special events. Three, we desire more variety in Grand County special events. And four, we give preference to events with an established track record. So that's the end of the motion, sorry. And, and then I'll just note that in, in the special event ordinance that we, um, just passed, you know, there's a lot of criteria for what things we should, should be taking into account when approving or denying these ITAs. Um, I, in this findings, I didn't list all of those things, I just list, listed the ones that I thought were most relevant to the decision we made in case someone needs to document, you know, why, why we did this. Of course, people can also just look at the tape for a much more detailed discussion.
All right.
And I guess I should have gotten a second before talking, sorry about that.
Sorry, Mary just seconded, so I have a motion on the table by Kevin, that was a, a great and long motion, Kevin, good job. Second by Mary, um, further discussion on this. And I will note that we did workshop this for two hours before our meeting, we went through everything fairly extensively, so I feel pretty okay about it. Anyone add anything?
I, I guess maybe I, this is the first time we've done this way, I will, will just say a little bit more for, just for members of the public to, tuning in. Um, you know, in Grand County, we get a lot of special event applications. There, you are, they, you know, bring people here, which provides us some economic benefits. Some of them, you know, provide opportunities for local participation or local entrepreneurs, but they, you know, they also can cause crowding and disruption. And so we're trying to, in deciding which special events we approve, you know, just be more mindful and deciding which ones we do. So this is the beginning of that, that process, we've been discussing it for the last couple of years, switching to this style. I, I, I think this is an ongoing process and I, and I think this first round, we, we, you know, we didn't turn down any event that's been operating. Just in case people think that we're turning down applications, you know, willy-nilly, right and left, that, that so far ha- has not happened. All the events that have been operating, um, got approved, but, you know, we do have quite a few special events already. So I, I think that the sense of the commission during the workshop was that if we're gonna approve a new event, it better be offering something special like variety or, you know, incredible benefits or something like that. Um, there were a few new events that we, we did approve just because they had very minimal impact near Moab. There was a motorcycle event that operates out of Green River, there were some races along the Cocapelli Trail. Um, and, and so I think we, for tho- those events, which were technically high-impact events, but they don't have high-impact right here in town, um, we were a little more nervous doing this, so just wanted to, for people who didn't see the workshop, get, get that out there.
Thank you. I'll call for a vote then, um, motion by Kevin and a second by Mary. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously, seven to nothing. All right, Angie and Rachel, thank you. Uh, next up is item E, Star Business Grant, twenty twenty-two funding increase. Ben Alter, Economic Development Specialist, and August, I assume is still online. Where are you taking this from, Ben?
Oh, I was supposed to text someone. I can answer any questions there are about this, I'd have to go over the background if there are. I think this item is fairly straightforward, this was the money that was moved over from the, uh, the budget amendment a few weeks back. And while I believe the intention was to allocate five hundred thousand dollars to this program, it needs to be formally done. So that is essentially what we're asking of this first item here.
Right, yeah, and we did move that money at a prior, at a prior meet, I think it was a two weeks ago or is it a month ago?
Month ago, no, I think it was the second.
I think you're right, yeah.
I can make a motion.
Thanks, Sarah.
I move to allocate five hundred thousand dollars of economic diversification transient room tax dollars uh, to be made available during the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two Grand County Commission meeting towards the sustainability and resilient STAR business grant program. Sorry, I read that slightly wrong.
You're fine, I'm, I'm too deep in working on my legalese these days, so.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you, uh, motion by Commissioner Stock and second by Commissioner Hadeen, any discussion? Great, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously, six to nothing with Commissioner Clapper absent. Thanks, Ben. And it looks like you'll be up here for the next few items. Uh, item F, award of sustainable and resilient STAR business grants. Back to you.
Sure, so, um, I, I sent the commission an email a few hours ago that, um, due to just some, any concerns about water availability in Thompson, we want to continue having discussions with Sana, the attorney, and probably John Corkery, just to iron everything out. So I just want to make clear that we're not taking any way, taking away anyone's award and I personally stand by the recommendations that the grant committee made and intend to see those through, um, as best I can. So, Sana, thank you, bear patience with this process. Um, so I've asked the commission, um, remove, um, ABC Thompson LLC's award from any potential motion tonight. I'm happy to talk about any of the awards, um, to the extent that I feel that I can. We did have our evaluation committee members sign NDAs, um, to, just so that we wouldn't be revealing confidential business information. However, everyone who is on this list tonight is aware that, um, you know, parts of their project were made available so that you all could understand at a glance, um, what it is that Grand County Economic Development will be funding. Um, the other note is that there will be another STAR business grant approval item at the first November commission meeting. I didn't want to add anyone on here who didn't give me a verbal or email yes, they actually wanted their award, which I know is crazy, but just want to make sure. Um, so this is everyone who got back to me in time for the eighteen deadline. Um, so we'll have some stragglers in November, but I'm still working on the contract, so it works out perfectly for me. So I'm happy to talk at length about the program, any logistical questions? And then I'm happy to talk to, to speak to some length about the projects, um, that we have before us tonight.
All right, if you'd like to ask Ben a question or make a comment.
It's hard work.
Thanks, yeah.
It's hard work for the people, thank you, Jac.
Yeah, I was, I was on, on this committee, there's four others on the committee, I think. And then it was overseen by Ben, he did a great job of facilitating everything, we met for two full days and then had a couple of follow-up meetings. You know, you're not gonna get anything perfect, but I think we did pretty good due diligence and, and went through and tried to apply an even, uh, approach to, to distributing fees. And I was just really impressed with the applications, like people have some great ideas here, it's, it's really cool to see what some folks are coming up within the county to, to diversify.
Yeah, yeah, couldn't be more, and I, I want to again thank the, the committee for all the time they put in, might continue to put in. As I call them for, for various questions.
Just procedural, and maybe Christina would be the one that answers. I'm just wondering if when we make the motion, we should, uh, say the amount and the company just for the record. What do you think, is that necessary? For the minutes?
Oh, are you saying for all of the awards, not just the one that's excluded?
Yeah, right, I think Mary means, do, does she, 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 should she state the amounts in each of the businesses?
I, I didn't, that, I just was wondering, and Christina didn't chime in, so I'm guessing it's not necessary. Sometimes it seems to be necessary to do the amount, so we could say the amount of the seven hundred seven hundred and nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars, but then it's not quite that.
It would be less than a hundred.
Yeah, so it'd be less, uh, it'd be six hundred and nine dollars.
I recommend, um, that you at least cite two in the specific amounts and two the companies uh, set forth in the packet, and it's all right there, so I don't think you need to go through every single one.
Okay, okay.
Do you want to make a motion, Mary?
Yes, I'll may, I'll move to approve, uh, the grants, following STAR grants, excluding the hundred thousand to ABC Thompson LLC. And the most, uh, the amount of money will be six hundred and nine thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And, and did you mean to say that to the grants that are in, in the packet?
Grants that are in the packet, excluding one.
All right.
Should I repeat that, or did you get it well enough?
I'll, I'll second. Okay, I have a motion by Mary to approve the, the grants and a second by Kevin, further discussion on the grants? And again, this is the first batch of grants, right? Ben and when, hopefully we'll be able to approve the, the rest of them at the next meeting.
And, and I'll add that, at, at a future meeting, um, similar to the Torresham Grant, it was just a bit easier because there are only seven awards, but I, I plan to present to the commission what our office. But I, I plan to present to the commission what our office learned from this and how we think we can tailor this program going forward um, to, to better fit our diversification efforts. Because I think this was an awesome pilot and we learned a lot. Um, there's just a lot more to synthesize because there are more awards. But that's coming.
Right. And, and I, I just said before, but just want to reiterate and correct me, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. We're not, we're not denying the grant to, um, the ABCs, ABC, which just seems a bit premature to approve it now. It might very well.
Yeah, and that, that's partially on my fault. I followed through with everyone who wanted to discuss it, but it seems like I didn't include everyone on every conversation. So we just need to button some things up. So no, no revoking at this time.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Ben, you do, do, you do a great job. Yes, thank you so much. Giving away money. And it's just exciting.
It's so fun. It's surprisingly tiring, but it's very fun.
Yeah, you guys get a chance to work with them on one of the committees. It's pretty fun.
We're, we're running out of commissioners. Everyone's got a chance.
Chiming in from the ether, but yes, Ben, you've done an amazing job. I, I couldn't trust, I, I, I wouldn't trust any, well, I could potentially trust other people, but I trust you incredibly, uh, highly to take it, take this on.
Thank you. And thanks to our applicants for putting their best feet forward. It was, it was a pleasure to go through all this.
And, you know, this is the outcome of many years of work by Chris Baird and myself and Evan and different people that went up to the Capitol and pounded those steps. And it took us three years, wasn't it, three or four, uh, to move it so that now some of the TRT tax goes directly to help people that live in our community.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I thank you for connecting the dots there because I, I think we do see, you know, statements that, you know, there's been TRT reform and it's freeing up all this money. And that sounds kind of abstract, but now, now we're, you know, with this list of businesses and the money that's being awarded to them, we're seeing, you know, what that actually means on, on the ground here in law. Yeah, it's money staying in our community and there's a, there's a great multiplier effect here as well that, that will do us well for a long time.
And I just, just for the public, uh, there's going to be follow-up. We're going to, you know, the, they're going, we're going to make sure these grants are successful and that the money is spent as it was designed to be spent. So it's not just a giveaway and then walk away. Right, we're going to be watching it for a while.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. And, um, we'll move on to item G, approving a cooperative agreement between Utah State University and Grand County, Utah for the MOB Small Business Development Center.
Sure. So speaking of our grant programs, this was a position that we had hoped to have in place by the time that we started our grant programs. Um, fortunately for us, Megan McCall, who, uh, runs the SPD C, uh, out of Landing for San Juan County, has been pitching in for, uh, our county as well in the absence of having this role filled. Um, she's done an incredible job and she's learned a ton about our business community. And so when we bring on this new role, um, I think that we're assured that they're going to have very local, relevant training in addition to great financial training. Um, the SBDC role that we used to have in the county was a part-time role. And while it was of immense benefit to benef- uh, to businesses, it was clear that that was something that needed to become full-time because especially with what Mary was referencing with the change in, uh, TRT law, um, we have so many more opportunities to work with businesses and, and see new endeavors through. Um, so with all that said, um, we got together with USU almost a year ago at this point and, uh, hammered out a plan for us to fund the role while still being maintained under the purview of USU as the SBDC role usually is. Um, so that we could bring it to a full-time role at least for the next three years. Um, and then I think at that point, we're going to reassess and see how it's working out. And if that partnership will continue, if that role should stay as full-time, um, I suspect it would be, but that's for time to determine. So we're, we're excited to work with USU on this and, um, really stoked that the county wants to fund this. This was something we talked about many months ago. And I think it just kind of lost its inboxes. So, um, happy to bring it back.
All right, thanks, Ben. Any, uh, any questions on this for Ben?
I have a question, Ben.
Sure.
Um, I'm confused given our conversation. Do you need a resolution or do you not need a resolution? Do you just need the MOU? What are we approving?
So USU just needs the MOU. Um, when, when I sent it to you, you put it in resolution format. And so I assume that that was the best way to go forward on the county's end. Um, if this is not the way to do it, then we can just bring it back next commission meeting as just the plain old MOU we got. Um, I wasn't particularly sure about, uh, the difference in, in MOU versus a resolution for, you know, the county's purposes. Um, so.
We don't, we don't need the resolution. So I, I think we just had a miscommunication about needing a resolution. So if all you need is the MOU, you don't need to bring it back. The MOU is there. It's Exhibit A to the resolution. But Commissioner, you, you can, instead of approving the resolution, you can just approve the MOU in the packet and leave it at that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and I've reviewed this a ton with Christine. She's done an awesome job. And I can confirm that, that the MOU, other than the, the letterhead essentially is reproduced exactly as Exhibit A. So that is what USU sent us and what they're expecting us to, to sign.
Great.
I move to approve the cooperative agreement between Utah State University and Grand County for the purpose of establishing the MOAB Small Business Development Center.
That's an MOU.
Is that a second, Evan?
Yes.
Excellent. All right. I have a motion to approve the MOU by Mary and a second by Evan.
And that, uh, would be spread out over, the fiscal impact would be spread out over three years for up to 100,000.
Not to exceed.
Yeah.
And is that from just general fund?
That's a good question. I actually don't know. August, can you clarify?
It's from, it's from TRT Economic Diversification.
Great. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on, uh, the motion by Mary and the second by Evan. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes seven to nothing.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks, August, or thanks, August and Ben. Thanks, Ben.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Item I thought would be, but it's actually a consent agenda. Do I need to provide anything about that?
Yeah, you should, you should be good, Ben. Thanks. Have a good night.
You can go home.
All right. Um, item H, Approving Board of Equalization Hearing Officer Recommendations, Clerk Whitick.
All right. So you'll see in the packet, um, I provided a table of, um, parcels that um, did go, undergo in the, an adjustment as a, as a result of an appeal with the hearing officer representing Grand County, who is Randy Kelly. Um, he's worked with Debbie Swayze, the asses- the Grand County Assessor. I think for 12, something, uh, 10 years or more now in that, in that role with Grand County. Um, and so presented in the table are those recommended changes from that process of, of seeing hearings by the Board of Equalization. I did get a chance to sit in on a couple of them. Um, I'm not sure if De- Debbie is available on the call, um, i- if we're aware, if anyone has any particular questions. Um, but the general breakdown is that there was a decrease, decrease in total market value of a million 177,553 dollars. And the, um, taxable values decreased by amount of, by the amount of 3,799,987 dollars. And so the reason that maybe, may look incongruous is that, um, uh, in many cases, the market value didn't, wasn't changed as a result of this appeal, but that, but the taxable value was cha- was, uh, was changed because it went from a second, secondary to a primary. And so that, and so that means that the taxable values, uh, I believe it's 45%.
Fifty-five.
Fifty, 50%, sorry. I don't know why I thought it was 45%.
Discount is 45.
Uh, yeah, okay. Um, so it, yeah, and then the, the certified tax rate, um, you know, which was, uh, sort of proposed by the state and certified, um, by myself and, and by you, the commission. Um, that, so that certified tax rate applied to that, um, that decrease in taxable value um, results in a decreased total tax dollars for all entities of approximately 39,941 dollars and 66 cents. Um, so yeah, I, I, I'm, you know, in looking at this and sort of considering how, for example, a treasurer Kaufman typically presents items like this, I'm thinking that perhaps in the future, um, a little bit of historical data could be really useful and illustrative for the commission in terms of how many hearings happened for, maybe within the past 10 years and what these, what these total amounts would be from year to year. So I look forward as I continue in this role to think about those opportunities to provide better information to the commission. I know Kevin in particular will, will appreciate it.
And you just took some words out of my mouth, but, but you didn't fully preempt me, so.
But I, I can say that with regards to last year, um, even though the, this, uh, this reassessment that happened this year was in the city district and we did see quite a lot of increases, um, the amount of appeals and adjustments were relatively in line. Um, I, I can say from, from last year, which also saw a lot of increases, just not in the city district. Any questions?
Yeah, well, well, some of us, just some comments for, for next, next time I do go through this. It, having kind of a trend, um, would be useful, but I think, I think as you just pointed out, um, our, you know, every five-year reassessment schedule is pretty uneven. And so this was a big year with a lot of properties being reassessed. Some years, it's just, it's only the hinterlands in the county and that's very different. So it's, so a year-over-year comparison isn't very useful. Um, you know, normalizing it by taxable value or something could be helpful or, or going back five or 10 years could also be useful. Um, I, it seemed, if I heard you correctly, it seems like quite a lot of these are just people who got assessed as a secondary residence. And they're saying, no, 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 I live here in this primary. That, that's two-thirds of it or something.
Right, or, or they may rent it to a, a primary resident. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then I guess it, it does seem a little, I mean, is, is there some confidentiality reason that we can't actually see addresses or just some kind of characterization, like each of these items? I remember going through that a few years ago and someone said, oh yeah, this was a hotel that, you know, they had a flood in one wing. And so they thought their valuation, you know, that, that kind of information could be helpful, or at least flagging the ones that are, you know, a little unusual. Um, I know, I mean, I guess just one wants to get a feeling of what's going on and, you know, when these valuation changes happen and a big table of numbers doesn't help them.
You know, and yeah, the only thing I can think of is that, you know, the, the, the tax bill records, you know, are essentially public record. It's something that you can search up. The only thing I can think of is that it, folks haven't even gotten their tax bills yet for this year. And so perhaps there's an element of, um, perhaps there's, there's an element of waiting until, you know, fo- you know, folks get their actual bill before it's sort of released to the public. I'm not sure. That's the only thing I can think of at the moment as to why, um, I have intentionally sort of followed the model of keeping, you know what, actually, you know what it might be as much as anything is our, our, our property tax software. When I generate reports from that, they, um, the, there, the report that I u- use to create this, generate this spreadsheet, um, actually doesn't include the, um, owner names. It's just by parcel for that particular report. So I think as much as anything, it might be like, you know, the, the, you know, I, I haven't developed the trick yet to associate the owner, the owner names or the, the addresses with the parcel numbers.
Yeah, and even, I mean, I, I don't know that names are necessary, you know, addresses might be helpful, but even, e- even if this were just somehow categorized, like, you know, here, you know, here, the first block, you know, this is secondary to primary. And then the next block is, I, I don't know.
Yeah, totally. And I, I think I took, I took one small step in that direction by adding the key at the top, which hadn't been offered in the past. But, but you're right. I think I could even go further than that.
Okay, so sorry to give you such a hard time.
No, no, that's totally great. Yeah.
Any other, uh, questions for Gabe? Don't think we have a motion on the table yet.
And you don't.
I would move to approve the proposed Board of Equalization Hearing Officers' Recommendations resulting from taxpayer evaluation appeals during the 2022 BOE hearings.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Clapper, second by Commissioner Walker. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Passes six to nothing with Commissioner Stock absent. And that ends our, uh, actually, it brings us to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of item A, sole source purchase, uh, Ecoquip Hydro Media Blaster. We also have applications to the Bureau of Land Management to renew road rights of way. Ratifying Chair Signature on Updated Opioid Legal Representation Agreement. Ratify Grand County Subgrante Agreement between Utah Association of Family Support Center Incorporated and Family Support Center Grant County. And lastly, renewal of 400 East Highway 191 billboard.
So moved. And I'll second that.
All right. Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any, uh, discussion on the consent agenda?
I know we usually don't, but I have two things. When I Googled, uh, hydro blaster, I came up with a bunch of super soaker squirt guns. Just for the record, that's not what we're discussing.
Glad you Googled that.
And, uh, right, yeah. And I'm, I'm, uh, not a fan of billboards. So that's the justification and the way I'll vote.
All right. Um, as I say, on, on the subject of, I'm not a fan of billboards either, but if we are going to have billboards, which are very hard to get rid of because of state code, I'd like them to be our billboards rather than some random person's billboard. So I'm in favor of us, you know, snapping up all the billboards we can and.
I like it. All right. This discussion has persuaded me.
Uh, I have a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. Excellent. I want to entertain a motion to go.
I move that we go into closed session to talk, uh, discuss, uh, pending or reasonable imminent, imminent litigation.
Second. All right. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All in, all in favor of going into closed session? Raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
Time is.
It is, uh, 7:09 PM.